Let's see, is it time? Yeah, 5:32. So I'm going to call this meeting to order for June 11th. Madam City Clerk?
We'll call Mayor Gortado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila. Councilmember Avalos.
She's here, back there. Avalos.
Councilmember Barron.
Present.
Councilmember Rios. City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Manager Jeffre-- I'm sorry, Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas. And just to reiterate, Councilmember Avalos is present.
Yes, present.
Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to government code section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members $790 monthly, regardless of the amount of meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Will you please go to item number one?
The city council will oversee UWS $5,000 check presentation to the California Latino Leadership Institute.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, you want to take over on that one? It's number one.
Sorry, I'm having trouble getting my agenda up here with my--
It's the presentation.
Sorry, which one is it? The blue one, here we go. All right, our first--
We did things color-coded around here.
Yeah. I don't always get the honor of introducing our presentations, so I'm excited. We have Universal Waste Services presenting a $5,000 check for the California Latino Leadership Institute. And we have some members of UWS. And Californian. Please introduce yourselves.
I am Janine Hamner-Holman with UWS. And I have another team member, Catherine, who's also part of UWS. And I got to know Lisa Baca, I don't know, five years ago, six years ago, something like that. And she was telling me about the amazing work that her organization does. And I have been working ever since to help them raise some money. And they do incredible work with youth. And this year, they're doing a project together with the Southgate Chamber. And so they're placing kids in the Southgate Chamber and training them with real, live work experiences. And so I thought this is the perfect time for UWS to get behind this program because a lot of the kids are from Bell High School, obviously not a UWS city. And so when this connection was made with the Chamber, I thought this is what's going to shake loose the money. And it did. And so I also want to give Lisa a minute to talk about the great stuff that's going on at the California Leadership Institute.
Hi, everybody. Just to give you a quick update, we did launch the Bell Trade Academy with Bell High School that was successful. And we're in conversations with Edison to scale it now to Southgate, to work with the Southgate High Schools. And I have had preliminary conversations with Councilmember Rios to base it out of the Southgate East LA College campus, working with electric vehicle batteries as the next trade opportunity. And I will be following up to do a meeting on that. But today, we're here to thank Ana Lizardaras, who is a saint, for mentoring all of the college interns of the kids from Southgate. This July, we will have back our Harvard-Southgate intern in his second year of college. And we have his sister going to Cornell. So we do have two Ivy Leaguers amongst many other great college kids. And I make a joke that it's our interns that put on the Christmas parade because nobody wants to work those hours. But right now, this $5,000 is like $50,000 for us to finish our year. So we are eternally grateful to the council for believing in this program, Ana for the Chamber for being our den mother, and Janine for making it happen for us. So thank you very much.
Nice.
Can we do a photo op? So this is the big check. This is an actual check. It's our 10-year anniversary this year. We survived COVID.
Thank you, Janine. Thank you, Ms. Baca, for coming, and Catherine.
Thank you so much. Okay, it's always good when we see contributions. Okay, item number two.
We have the city council will introduce the winners of the Amazon Future Engineer Scholarships. Ash Sanchez, first place, and Wendy Lopez, second place.
Hi, Tim.
Honorable Mayor Hurtado and city council members, it's really a pleasure to be here and to further bolster and amplify the partnership that Amazon is fortunate to have with the community of Southgate. You know, computer science, it's the fastest-growing profession within the science, technology, engineering, and math or STEM field. In California, there are currently 37,000 open computing jobs with an average salary of over $150,000. Yet, according to code.org, only 9,300 students graduated with a degree in computer science in 2020. And only 45% of all public high schools currently offer a foundational course. Amazon Future Engineers is a program that aims to increase student access to computer science education for those who are from underserved communities. And Amazon's investment in STEM education is an investment, frankly, in our future. With that, I'd love to introduce two Southgate natives that have received the Amazon Future Engineer Scholarship. Throughout California, we awarded this to 21 high school seniors, 21. And two of them are from our backyard here in Southgate. With that, they receive a $40,000 scholarship and a paid internship with Amazon following their freshman year. I'd like to-- I would like to call up our two recipients. And just a correction on the minutes there. So there are no first and second place, they're all first-place winners here. First is Wendy Lopez, who is a graduating senior from Southgate Senior High. And Wendy will be attending Wellesley College in the fall. And Wendy, would you like to say a few words?
So this whole scholarship was a really big surprise to me. But I think I'm just really happy to be where I am now and being able to have a future career in computer science and having people to back me up on that. And just coming from Southgate in general gave me lots of memories. And being from Southgate High School introduced me to a lot of people who helped me get where I am today. So I'm grateful to all of them and to my parents and my moms right here for making me the person I am today and getting me to this spot. So thank you.
Nice.
I totally put her on the spot there, so great job, Wendy. Before I move on, I also want to introduce Javier Gonzalez and Jason Demadura. They are part of our site leadership team for our Amazon Southgate facility. And we had the great fortune several weeks back of being involved in a very secretive surprise for Wendy at her computer science program that she was taking in downtown LA. So there were some-- I also definitely want to give a shout out to her mom if she could wave-- We all know who the real MVP is. Next, I'd like to call up our second recipient, Ash Sanchez. Ash is a graduating senior at Maywood Center for Enrich Studies. And Ash will be attending Harvard University in the fall. And Ash, would you like to say a few words?
So I guess I'm going to take a little bit from what Wendy said. She mentioned how it was like a really big surprise. Me and two other students or friends from my school, we went to kind of the Amazon Music Studios. And we simply thought that it was just going to be like, oh, we're going to be walking around the studios and just kind of like take a tour. However, like little did we know that we actually had won the award. And oh, how much I cried that.
Great surprise.
Yeah, it was really amazing. I am extremely grateful for what Amazon has been able to help provide for me and assist my mom in practically-- She no longer has a burden to kind of pay for my college education. And it's now all like fully covered. And then not only that, but I'm going to be attending one of the top private universities in America, which is Harvard University. And I'm so grateful that I was able to get accepted and be able to study a passion of mine, which is computer science. So again, thankful to my mom, thankful to Amazon Studios, and thankful to everyone else who's--
Ash, here you go. Wendy, here you go. If they haven't received their official checks, it's in the mail.
Oh, dear.
And as I mentioned, after their freshman year, they will be doing an internship with Amazon. And I believe shortly after that, they will become my boss, so I'm looking forward to that. And I'd love to invite folks for photo opportunities.
Pictures, yeah. Except for the guy with the Dodger hat, he knows better. We had this conversation. I know you did. Great start to the day. Money giveaway and all that, and that's amazing. Okay, so here we go. Item number--
We're going into closed session?
Yeah, closed session.
Item one, conference with Leo Council pending litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.98, 54954.9b3c, A, Alicia I Woodward versus City of Southgate. Item number two, conference with Leo Council, real property negotiations pursuant to government code section 54956.8, A property APN is 6264-004-900. Property address is 13050 Paramount Boulevard here in Southgate. City negotiator is Rob Houston, city manager, and negotiation with TBD.
Mr. City Attorney, City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, on item number one, Alicia Woodward versus City of Southgate, the city will be considering a proposed settlement in that matter. And item number two, the property is right at the corner of Gardendale and Paramount. And so we'll be providing guidance with respect to the city manager and to staff with respect to the possible use of that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just to make a correction, it's Gardendale, not Garfield and Paramount.
That's a Gardendale, right? Gardendale?
We knew it was rural, so we expected a little--
Well, I went to high school on Gardendale, so I think, yeah, it's kitty-corner for me.
You should know that one.
I should know.
Okay.
I think there's a problem with the mic here.
Uh-huh.
I cleared it. It was dusty, a little dusty.
All right. Anybody in the audience, thank you for coming in. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on these items, speak, come to the mic.
All right, Mr. Salinas, you know I like to know stuff. So this Alicia Woodward, what is this lawsuit about? If you could clarify. And this A for the property on Paramount, so what is the city going to do with this property? I mean, is the city going to build something? Are they going to approve some sort of project? If you can clarify what this Paramount Boulevard location is-- what the intention is, or what the city plans to do with that property? And then again, an update on the Alicia Woodward case, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any emails on this?
We have none.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the audience portion, and we'll be back.
Well, just on item number one, in response to Mr. Dominguez's inquiry, Mr. Mayor, this is a woman who tripped and fell on a metal plate around one of the city tree wells. On item number two, I really don't have anything further to add on that.
Yeah, and again, the only thing I would say on that one is that the city doesn't build anything on anything. We're not developers. We offer opportunities to people, they present those opportunities to us, and then we decide on that. But the city itself doesn't engage in that. Okay, thank you, we'll be back.
That's what we're going to discuss.
So I can ask that after?
Sure. Well, I bring it back up.
We're waiting for one of our colleagues. And what we'll be doing first, for those who are watching, is we're gonna finish our 5:30 meeting, and then we got a meeting that was scheduled at 5:29. And then we have our regular meeting, so I apologize for the delay. Ready to rock? Okay, we are back. Mr. City Attorney. Raul, that's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was distracted by the city manager here.
Oh, yeah. Rob, you're a troublemaker.
Mr. Mayor, in closed session, the city council heard about a case entitled Alicia Woodward versus City of Southgate. Ms. Woodward had alleged she had injured herself tripping over a metal grate on one of the city streets near Treewell. The city engaged in council and with her council, and I believe we have a tentative settlement in place on a motion that was made by Mayor Hurtado and seconded by Councilmember Avalos. And on a vote of five to zero, the city council authorized the city attorney to convey a settlement offer and to move this matter into settlement. The case is not yet settled, but the amount will be disclosed consistent with the Brown Act. Item number two, conference with Leo Council, real property negotiations. The city council was asked to provide very general guidance over property located at Gardendale and Paramount Boulevard, at 13050 Paramount Boulevard. After a very brief presentation by staff, there was no action that was taken by the city council on that matter, and general guidance was given to staff. That completes my presentation of these discussions. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Let me open it up to the audience. Anybody wishing to address us on those matters, please do so now.
All right, Mr. City Attorney, I'm gonna take another crack at this. So I'd like to know, what is the city intend to do with this property? I mean, this is a question mark for me. I mean, I don't know what this thing is or what it's about. And so if you could clarify and spell out exactly what the city's gonna do with this property, or, you know, or is there some sort of contention here as to who owns it? A question of ownership? So if you could clarify, I'd appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close the audience portion. Mr. City Attorney, if there's anything you can add.
Yeah, in response, the city hasn't made any determination about what it's gonna do with the property. The city has to comply with the number of state laws, including the Surplus Land Act. And so until we have clearance from the state and guidance from the state, we're not really in a position to be able to identify what the usage will be at that particular site. And more to come. So we're just not there. I understand that Mr. Mingus would like to have more information, so would the council. We're just going through a very preliminary process right now.
Yeah, and I gotta tell you, I know, because I get a lot of these similar questions, and there's some things we just cannot come out and discuss because they are involving negotiations or legal matters, and we're not there yet. Okay, all right. At this moment, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, let's go on to our next meeting. Hang on, let me get on here. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call the Southgate City Council, Southgate Housing Authority Successor Agency to the Community Development Commission of the City of Southgate, special joint budget meeting agenda for June 11th. Let's see. Roll call.
Mayor Chairperson Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairperson Davila.
Present.
Council Authority Agency Member Avalos.
Present.
Council Authority Agency Member Barone.
Present.
Council Authority Agency Member Rios. City Treasurer De La Paz.
Present.
City Manager, Executive Director Houston.
Present.
City Attorney, Authority Council, Salinas. Thank you, Mayor. Meeting compensation disclosure pursuant to Government Code Section 54952.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by city council members to $790 monthly regardless of the amount of meetings.
Thank you. Item number one, please.
The city council, Southgate Housing Authority, and the successor agency of the Community Development Commission of the City of Southgate will consider, A, adopting a resolution adopting the municipal budget for fiscal year 2425, with the changes stipulated in Exhibit A and B for a total of $174,195,754 for all the funds, along with any additions or deletions the legislative bodies may enact, and B, authorizing the reprogramming of fiscal year 2324 ARPA funds in the amount of $3,350,000, and C, adopting a resolution adopting the annual GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 2425. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City.
Mr. Mayor, before we continue, let me go ahead and do the announcement for the translation.
My apologies.
No, no, thank you. Si necesita introducción en español tenemos audífonos. Alguien necesita traducción en español levante su mano y se le dará un audífono. ¿No necesitan traducción?
Okay.
Okay.
Si.
¿Necesita traducción no está en español? No, you're good? Okay, great. Okay, gracias.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are proud to produce and present the city's budget for the 2425 fiscal year. If anyone is interested in the specifics of the budget and haven't seen it, we have a copy of the budget on our city's website. We had a thorough and extensive conversation in presentation that occurred with our department heads and city council last night. It is on our YouTube channel on the website. It can be watched at any point as it is filmed and recorded. We had a great discussion during that time. Questions were asked and answered and definitions given so that we have a feeling that we have a good budget before you. That's been presented, that's meeting the goals of the council, the goals of the community, being fiscally prudent, making sure we're staying within our means, and has the input of all the players. With that, I was going to hand the keys over to, for a brief discussion at a high level of that budget to our Administrative Services Director, Wendy O'Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So tonight, I'm just gonna give you a recap of last night's budget. What we're presenting to you is, as Mr. Houston said, the 2425 municipal budget and the five-year capital improvements program for the City of Southgate, Southgate Housing Authority, successor agency to the Community Development Commission of the City of Southgate. So just to recap on the 2324 budget accomplishments and reviews, we discussed the sewer fund and how staff went out and conducted an assessment. We brought that information back to council. Council voted to increase the sewer rates, which will be taking effect July 1st, 2024. The records for the sewer fund shows a deficit back to 2006. On the average, we were transferring about $475,000 from the general fund to the sewer fund to right-size that fund. And again, there was an approval of the sewer increase in January of this year by council. That rate that residents will see is $3.9, $3.29, excuse me, a flat rate that will be assessed. And then also, for the first year, the variable rate will come down to .32 and then progressively move up after that. And that's gonna be based on consumption. In the budget for 2425, there's no projections of general fund transfers. We did see a positive beginning fund balance with the revenues and expenditures that we anticipate. There was no need to transfer any monies to general fund, from general fund into the sewer fund for this year. Also, we discussed some of the economic changes, and those are just basically the strain on our expenditures and also the challenges with our revenues. So just to highlight the inflation, basically essential items are costing more out there, so consumers are being more mindful with their spending. Supply chains, public works can speak to when they go out and get quotes. Those quotes may change, or the product is not available based on the supply and demand. And then also revenues for last year. We did see property sales go up. Values went up in property sales, so the city was able to receive more money than we anticipated in property taxes. And then, on the other hand, when we review And then, on the other hand, when we reviewed and received our sales tax revenues, we saw that those were remaining relatively flat for this year that we're closing. So with those factors, when we do the budget for 2425 or each year, we do take data collection from our department heads, from our tax consultants like HGL for property and sales tax that we're getting, you know, them from reliable sources. The next point is the 2425 proposed budget. So what we did propose last night was revenues being proposed at $66.65 million with expenditures at $66.515 million. We do begin this proposed year with a $4.8 million beginning balance. So when you look at taking all factors in consideration, the general fund will have an unassigned fund balance in the positive of $425,000. Just wanna give you a reminder of where our sales tax or where our revenues come from. We do have, I showed a pie chart last night of a third of our revenue coming from property taxes, a third coming from sales tax, and then the last final third coming from fees, license, and permits. Expenditures, on the other hand, 65% are dedicated to salary and benefits, and then 17%, and just to highlight what that includes, it's medical expenses, UAL costs, and then also those obligated pay increases and merit increases were calculated into that number. And then supplies and services is about 17% of our expenditure budget. And that also includes for this budget cycle the one times, like the ERP system that we talked about, the HVAC system, and then also the assessment for the sewer, excuse me, the street lighting and landscape fund. And then, in that same vein, I just wanna talk about the street lighting and landscape. We were discussing last night, we receive about $2 million in revenues each year over year from that district. And the expenditures that we have seen are slowly inclining right now. We're looking at $3 million to $3.5 million in expenditures. So this year for 2425, that deficit rose up to about $1.4 million. Those, in order to subsidize that, that will be coming from the general fund. So that is something that we'll be working on to try to find out ways and methods to remedy that deficit in the general fund. Other budget solutions that we were looking at was the credit card, and discussed last night, was a credit card processing fee. Right now, in this budget, we're looking at $240,000 budgeting for just credit card fees alone. So transferring that over to the cardholder and taking that stress off of the city's general fund. And then, crossing guard, Chief Arakawa did mention looking into that. The budget for the crossing guard services for our schools is about $716,000. So that was something that we were gonna look into this fiscal year going forward. And then, one other one is a master fee schedule that we charge for our city services. Hasn't been updated since 2022. Even our director, Meredith, for community development, did mention that there were some areas that she could do, some reassessing of her department fees. So things are already in process for fiscal year 2425 to pull back monies to the general fund and reducing expenditures as well. Overall, as for all department heads, we are being mindful of our budgets and looking for opportunities, whether they be grant opportunities or top opportunities to look where we can save on expenditures to alleviate some of that, or help with some of those other uncontrollable costs which we outlined yesterday, where like the medical insurance and then just the insurance premiums that we can't control but are on the rise. Outside of that, I think the last point that I wanna make is the general fund reserve. For this 2425 proposed budget, we did not use any general funds to balance the budget, and we do still have a healthy general fund reserves of $28.5 million. So with that, that concludes my recap. If there's any questions or comments, I'll hand it back over to council.
Yeah, so I'm gonna open it up to the audience first. Anybody wishing to address the council on the budget, please come forward.
Okay, so yesterday, you know, you had the department's head doing their presentation of what they want to have, you know, funded for their department. You see the chief of police fighting for his department, the director of public works fighting for his department. But who's fighting for the people? Who's representing the interests of the people and the projects that the people would like to have for their city? Well, I guess it falls upon me to represent and be the advocate for the residents that live here. And what I would like for you to do is carve out $2 million from the budget and give us, put it in a fund for Mr. Costley so we could use it for a splash pad at Hollidale Regional Park. Now, you had this organizational chart that showed the residents above everyone else, which to me is laughable, because if that were true, then what I'm asking for should supersede everything else here that everyone else is asking for. It really, the people should come first, don't you think? It only makes sense to me, since it is the people's money. We're talking about US taxpayers' dollars, and you haven't given a shit. You haven't. You know, you spent a beautiful, you did a beautiful job last year funding the hell out of the police department and giving them what they needed to conduct their business. And then you took care of Public Works last year with buying them, I don't know how many vehicles, and using general fund money, I don't know how many times last year, I stopped counting at three. I know it was more than three. So I had a chance to speak with a gentleman by the name of Manuel Carrillo Jr. He's the director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Baldwin Park. And I asked him, so how did you guys score a splash pad for your city? So they have two, and they're 6.7 square miles, their size, and they have 70,000 residents. He said, well, you could use ARPA funds. You can use CDBG funds. You can use Measure A funds. So I know you have, was it 12 million, 13 million for ARPA? So why can't you just carve out 2 million from that and set that aside for our splash pad? And plus, you throw in the Measure A funds, that should do it right there. Actually, I don't even need 2 million. What I really need is just one, because what I'm waiting for is a grant from the State of California, the Department of Parks Recreation. So last year, I spoke with their lady who oversees their grants, a lady named Adela Valdez, and she told me to check in with her in July that they should get a new set of grants for this year. So I'm just, I'm waiting for that State Parks grant. And if, so if you could just set aside 1 million from the ARPA funds and set it aside for Mr. Costley so we could pursue this splash pad, that'd be tremendous. And also, the reason why I'm pursuing this is because last year, you know, that fucked up Facebook group, Southgate News, there was, somebody made a posting about, you know, why is it that we have to go to the city of Bell and use their splash pad? Why can't we have one? And then everyone jumped on board, saying, you know, we should have one here. And I was like, yes, we should, tiny little bell. How is it that they were able to score a splash pad? Meanwhile, our city, and we're not a poor city. We have money. We have, you heard what the Administrative Services Director just said. And also, what is the, can I just finish? One more, please, just give me one more statement, please, Mayor.
Give me another 15 seconds, go.
Okay, so the statement that Mr. Costley said yesterday pertaining to parks and the impact that parks make, so the administrative services, think of them as the brains of the city. Public Works, think of them as the guts, the inner organs of the city. But Parks and Recreation, that's the heart. That's the heart of the city. Give us, give us the million. We deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Next speaker, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just as the speakers come up, we're familiar with Mr. Dominguez, but it is practice the, to identify yourself so that the person transcribing the public comment section understands who the individuals are. And also, for the members of the public, we do ask our speakers not to use profane language, but we are limited because the individual speakers do have the right of free speech here. And so, for those of you that may be new to the city council, either in person or on video, we're constrained, and we have to allow for that comment as a constitutional right. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Lisa Therese from Kaufman Avenue. I just wanna do thank everybody for their presentations yesterday. They were very detailed and insightful, especially considering the amount of pages that the budget takes. But my question had to, or one of the questions I have had to do with Mr. Costley's ask towards the end of his presentation about the Winter Wonderland. I think it's, I wasn't sure if it's going to be, whether it's going to be included or not, whether it can still be included or not. And I also wanted to suggest for next year to have these presentations available for the public, at least, you know, a few days beforehand, so that we can also kind of use them to guide us through the budget, because it is very complicated. I myself have been a part of a nonprofit board, so I'm familiar with budgets, but the extent of this one is pretty immense compared to, you know, a couple million dollar nonprofit organization. So that would be very helpful, at least for the public. And the other comment I had related to, just with, related to the the street improvements, I was gonna save it for public comment later, but I did wanna make the comment that I have made a few requests for the sidewalks to be grinded or at least fixed. I do walk and run through my neighborhood a lot, pretty much daily, and I have been reporting a lot. And I was very impressed with the department coming through and getting those sidewalks fixed. And I know that it's going to be very helpful, especially with any, you know, possible litigation that can ensue from people tripping. I myself have hit my toes quite a lot. I'm probably one of the clumsiest persons I know. I'm very grateful, and again, I commend the folks who go out and spend the whole day grinding down the streets because it does not look easy. But thank you all.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Amador, 9293 Park Avenue. For starters, if you wanna save some money on the budget, you could start by canceling the Siaka contract. I reported it to the city manager and also to the police department regarding the contract, and it's not being honored. I will read you verbatim. Section 1 of Siaka agrees to provide one assigned officer totaling 40 hours per week. They don't have that. They have one officer for about five cities. They've told me this themselves on multiple occasions. And if you look at how much is assigned right now for the budget, I think it's over a million, with I think 500,000 more guaranteed to Siaka. For what? They don't show up. They don't, you know, care about the community or the property values, considering that one-third of the budget comes from property values. So you could look at that, because that's fraud. I brought it up already to city manager several times, and I have to talk to the city attorney to know or bail. And it's very clear in plain English. It's very easy to investigate, but nothing has been done about it. In terms of the budget, considering that I worked in finance for 20 years, I'm not sure when was the last time the city looked at the treasury management statement. I would like to have citizens be able to look at that because that's usually where a lot of the fees go to. What I'm having to raise it with citizens, for citizens in terms of the credit card on transactions. I don't know how much for earning and earning credit, so I'm not sure, Mr. Kelly, if you say how much for earning and earnings credit? Because we shouldn't be paying anything in treasury management right now. And all those services that the banks should be providing should be, at this point, considering the interest rates are so high, a lot of it should be free for the citizens here. So I think if we both, if we both review of our financial dealings with our financial decisions, it's warranted considering, you know, some of the constraints that we have in the budget, especially if we're gonna have a deficit. So I'm asking you guys to review it, hold people accountable, because like David Hare says, you know, we're the ones that are keeping the city afloat with our taxes, and we understand those challenges, but we expect to hold you guys accountable and do their job. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see, no one else come forward? I'm gonna close that portion. Okay, emails. Do we have any emails?
We don't have an email for that item. Thank you.
Okay, so bringing it back. Counsel?
Can we respond to some of the concerns that were mentioned?
Certainly, we can see who wants to jump in, but I'll grab a couple in there that, one was somebody interested in our budget, which was exciting to hear. As a numbers guy and knowing all the work that goes in, if we have any residents that wanna learn more about the budget, I think that would be great. I welcome if anyone wants to email our staff, either myself or Wendy. There could be, you know, a time where we could fix a time to go over in detail and have a sort of a little session on how it works and questions could be asked, even offline. There isn't always a huge audience for people that wanna get into tons of layers of detail, but once in a while, we find someone. So if you're interested, let us know. We'd like to connect, and we can explain more of the budget for you at another time. And then, there was talking about finding the different sidewalk blemishes and issues and the fact that you've reported them and seen some good action from our staff, which I think is great. I wanna make a pitch for our app that we have, the City App. It's a new improved version, and we encourage all of our residents. If you see sidewalk that's wrong, light out, graffiti, anything in the city, download the app, take a photo of whatever that issue is. You just select what the item is, and you, the first time, you have to put in your information, but after that, you take a photo, say what the issue is, send it. It'll go to the right department of the city automatically. You'll get a notice when they've received it, and you'll also get a notice and a picture of the resolved issue when it's done. So that's a great way to communicate. If you ever see something, you don't have to figure out where to phone. You don't have to wonder if it ever got fixed. Use your app. I just recommend that. And as for other questions that are outstanding, anybody?
Yes, and one of the questions was, what was the results of the request for Winter Wonderland? I think we received direction from council to look at putting on that event for next year. And as we look at putting that event on, we will look at seeing if we can find sponsorships or other ways to pay for the cost of the event and work that out together with our businesses and corporate partners, and then do any additional things we need to through budget mid-year review.
The Siaka question, I don't know, Chief can respond briefly to that?
Yeah, I'm unaware of them not responding to the city. I get very few complaints about them. I will call them tomorrow and ask them if they're abiding by the contract, but get very few complaints from them. It is expensive. It's required by the CDC for the city to have animal control services, and there's not a lot of options out there. But usually, when we have issues with Siaka, we are able to call them and resolve it. And, but I will inquire and talk to the executive director tomorrow.
Couple of real quick things on that. When you say not a lot of options, can you?
What are the options?
What are the options?
Um, if you can get the county to take on animal control services, they won't do that. We've inquired. Long Beach was another option. They just don't have the staffing to take on another city.
So the lack of options, though, we've gotta make sure, though, that what they are doing is doing what's expected per the contract. And I, because I have heard a couple of complaints from people, and I always tell them, it comes out of the police department. Any complaint should go straight to them so they can document and reach out to them. So my recommendation is, if we get complaints like that, if we don't, if they don't get them, they don't exist. So we gotta make sure that we send it to the PD, and they'll review it with Siaka, and if they are not abiding by it. Again, our options are limited, and maybe that's part of it. They probably know that we don't have an option. And does that mean we're stuck with them? But we still have to make sure that they're following what we agreed to by law. Let's see, what else? All right, so at the risk of sounding like we're gonna get a splash pad, I will say the following. I too have had a lot of requests for a splash pad, and I know that we don't currently have a budget set for that, but if Mr. Costley can start looking for some grants that possibly can do that. And I'll tell you where I'm coming from on this. A lot of our children are coming, and I say this because of the youth program that I belong to. People in our community cannot afford a lot of things. There are a lot of children in our community that will never go to Disneyland because they can't afford it. They'll never go to Knott's Berry Farm. But if we can get something like this in the Hollidale area, would be phenomenal. To them, that's the Disneyland that they'll know. And so, again, I've had a lot of conversations with Mr. Dominguez, and I gotta tell you, he does a lot of work in trying to find funding for it. I don't know how much of that is really gonna pan out, but if we can try to find something, I'd like to make an effort on doing that. And again, it's, I think about the children that I see constantly at the park through the Southgate Junior Athletic Association, and how there are a lot of their families just struggle. And knowing that they'll never go to a place like Disneyland or Universal Studios or Knott's Berry Farm, to them, even like the street fair, that's the only thing they'll ever remember as a youth. Maybe that when they get older, they'll be able to afford it. But again, that's something, and again, I don't wanna give you high hopes on something that might not happen, but I want you to know that I think a lot of us would like to see something like that. So I'll leave it at that. So I'll leave it at that. What else was said? I think that kind of sort of covers everything, but I did, oh, you had a couple of questions, right? Because I do have some comments, but I'll let my colleagues go first. And Mr. Rios, I always leave you till that, so I'm gonna let you go first this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have to respond to the Siaka, too. I think there's been articles, there has been, I read in the, in the times where, you know, they treat the animals inhumanely, it has to do with space there at the location. And now we're hearing that there's only one officer to our city, which is quite big, and there's a lot of, and so if it's, it's not delivering on its service, and we're paying close to a million dollars, I mean, we should put a little pressure on them, or the county or anybody to, I mean, animals should be treated, they're, they're like family to a lot of people. I have one, and I don't know what this cost, even when I go over there for medical, but my, I mean, I'm paying a lot. And, and so I just hope that, I think we could do better as a society for, to treat our animals, and we have a responsibility to, to, to make them more accountable if they're not being accountable, or find a way, or someone else that could do the job. So that's, that's, those are my comments.
And so Mr. Carlos, that you know what he said? That's why I'm a vegetarian. I don't need animals, because I love animals, and I've heard those complaints as well. And we have a friend that always reaches out to us. She's part of Southgate Middle School, and she sends me all these images all the time. And we, we, we get it. Okay, all right, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, like, I've adopted two animals from Siaka. I've gone, I've gone there. It's a well-run location. They, they ask for a lot of donations and volunteer hours to, to be able to make that place run the way it does currently. I do think that we have a problem with the way we treat animals as a society, but I think that starts at our home. And I think that's something that we have to do better as residents, of how we manage and we take care of our animals, and also to pay for the licenses, pay for the registration of the animal, right? All those are fee generation, or generate fees that the, excuse me, that the, the city can now collect for, to be able to lower the cost of the Siaka, the Siaka contract. But Chief, I know you've explored many options. I remember speaking that for us to manage that process ourselves would be way more than the million dollars or close to a million dollars that we pay currently. You know, yes, you know, we're paying into a service. We should be held to that contract agreement, the service level agreement that they've, they're getting. And if we're not there, then let's make sure we, we ask why, and if it's something that needs to be addressed, then let's address it. But for the residents, I really would like you to, to urge you to be better pet owners. You know, be mindful of your animals. During COVID, the number one thing that was happening was pet adoption. As soon as everybody went back to work and everybody went back to school, all the, the animal shelters were overrun with animals. Because the people who had them, who wanted them during the time when they needed companionship, no longer needed them. And that is sad, and that's what happened. So we need to take accountability for what we do as well as residents and pet owners, and I hope that, you know, we can take, you know, be mindful of that as well. And, you know, blaming an organization that is trying and not meeting its, its level of our expectation, I, I ask you to go volunteer and be part of the solution.
Okay. Did you want to address something real quick? Can you wait just one second before, because I know you're, you're going to talk about the?
I wanted to.
Credit card fees, maybe?
I, I wasn't done, but.
Oh, okay, my bad.
So regarding, I know one of the speakers spoke about treasury management services. So treasury management services are usually offered by the financial institutions to, you know, the, the business or whoever the entity is. What we're getting charged is not from treasury management services. It's from a merchant processing, okay? So those are a third-party processor that processes the payments that we would collect as a city. That's a completely different thing. We can negotiate our treasury management services with our financial institution because they're the ones that we do business with. The third parties, we do not, right? They, they offer the, the services, and that is their, their transaction fee. It's like when you go to an ATM off-site from your bank, you don't get to negotiate that while you're there. You can't say, well, no, I'm not going to, you know, make it lower to a dollar, then I'll pull money out. It doesn't work that. But, but one thing that I think we need to start, you know, doing is trying to educate our residents on other payment options that don't have those fees associated with. Yesterday, Liz Reese spoke of using your account information to do a bank transfer directly from your account, which is an option that we offer. So if we can start helping our residents be educated to that level of payment method, then we don't have that fee generation for the resident, we don't have that fee charged to the city as well. But that's all I had. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna make sure that Meredith gets this. They addressed it to me, because I happen to be the mayor, but I honestly, it's our staff and council direction that kind of does this, but we were congratulated for how our programs with the Office of Community Planning Development, with the CDBG funds and stuff like that. And they basically said at the end, thank you for your leadership. Honestly, well, it's everybody here, but it's your staff that did that. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is that our staff works really hard to make sure that we're in compliance. Our finance department has, we've gotten audited, and we've received, you know, clean bills of health. Again, I don't know if you want to touch on that a little bit, but I want to make sure that you get this. I'll send you the, the email that I got. But this is what our staff does. We, whatever funding we get, we want to make sure that we, we handle it properly. Now, one of the things that we did yesterday, and I think it's important that we touch on it today, is just, you talked about how we do have a $28 million in reserve. I went back over the last few years, and I'm just going to go through this list real quick. In 2015, 2016, we had 14 million in reserve. The following year, 18 million. The next year, for whatever causes, we went down to 11 million. Seven million were, were used on other things. In 2019, it went up a little bit to 14 million. Then it came down to 10 million, then 12 million. Then in 2022, we jumped all the way to 25 million in reserve. Then the following year, 27 million, and this year, we're 28 million. And that is with us, and again, if you can touch just briefly, Wendy, on where we are in taxing people, we do not have a utility users tax like most cities do. And just about every city in the southeast area has the same sales tax that we do, which is 10.25. And even though that people on social media will say, well, we're the highest taxing people, that is just factually incorrect. It's just not true. You know, the truth is the truth, even if nobody believes it, and a lie is a lie, even if everybody believes it. So I just want to make sure people understand. We do everything that we can. Our staff does everything that we can to make sure that we manage our money, because we live here, too. It's our money as well. We manage it to the best of our ability. Most of our budget is actually through grants that we get, and maybe the city manager can talk a little bit about that, just real briefly, because we talked about it yesterday. And being the new person here, and your observation in terms of the, the monies that we get, but I don't know who wants to go first. You guys can arm wrestle for that. So.
So last night, we did update the survey, the service and tax survey. And so this is a comparable for numerous cities to Southgate residents. So the graph that was put up last night, and just so you know, the, the presentation is online now, so you can see that at cityofsouthgate.org. So the city of Southgate per capita, our residents are seeing $36.44 on average, that per person would be paying if we were to break down those numbers. And that's comparison to other cities. The lowest city after that, or the second lowest in this chart, is Bellflower at $47, and it goes all the way up to Whittier at $151.62. And as the mayor said, we do not have a utility users tax, and there's some other special assessments that other cities have that we also do not have.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. So I was going to mention the tax, but instead, help refresh my memory of the topic you wanted.
That's okay. I'll say it slowly for you.
Thank you.
No, I apologize. No, it has to do with your perception when you came here, as to how we deal with grants, yeah?
Thank you, yes. That got me back, thank you. Yeah, so as a new person coming to this city, realizing how tough budgets can be and expenditures of just keeping all the basic services going, I wondered, a city like Southgate, how they're going to, you know, I expected that you'd have sort of, like many cities, rundown facilities, maybe the parks, not many parks, not many services. Things maybe wouldn't be up that well. And I, as I'm driving through the city, I see Southgate Park with all these features, well-maintained. I'm on Firestone, and got a well-paved street with a great median looking wonderful. I see new projects, parks being built, orchard, urban orchard park on the east side of town, see Hollydale Park being renovated. It's like, where's all this money coming from? Cities will struggle often to have a little bit of their general fund to throw towards some project, smaller project per year. And in Southgate, the city's virtually using no general fund, but there's millions of dollars to the tune of 30 to 40 million dollars a year going into projects to help make the city better. Like right now, Garfield has a whole set of medians beautifying, almost done now, down the whole strip of Garfield. Long Beach has a whole section of medians being put in. We are starting in just a few months Tweety, the Tweety Mile Road. Anyone's driven down Tweety Mile, it's a little bumpy. We're going to fix that. And all this is coming from grants, from measure, measure money for roads, just creative work from the staff to find funding when there isn't funding, from the regular taxes and, and revenues we're getting from the city. We're finding them from other sources. And so that takes effort, and it's impressive, and it's making Southgate way better than maybe normally we could expect. So it's a great work, and it's great to see more projects are in the future.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
I just want to make some comments related to the budget, because it's the most important thing, decisions we make. And it's, even though it's a living document, it's, it's fluid, you know, it's, we'll approve something tonight, but I, I just think we need to know that there are some challenges and opportunities ahead. And the community needs, needs to know this, that, that we have, have tightened it up even this year. Some of our departments, I noticed, community development is, you know, from last year, $5 million difference, Parks and Rec, $4 million difference, their operating budgets from last year. The police, even our police department took a million and a half deduction, so, and Public Works, 12 million dollars. So I, so there, you know, and yet, we've had 30, in the last three, four years, we've had $34 million from ARPA, meaning the American Rescue Money. And that's been a Godsend, really. I mean, it's, it's helped every city, colleges, and a lot of institutions. So it's not just us, and we know what happened so during the last few years. But yeah, medical costs, insurance, pension plans, there's a lot of aging infrastructure. There's, those are challenges that the city has. And, but I got to say, this team is, starting with the sewer, we started to address some of these issues. So I think we're on the right track, but it's moving forward. I think there's challenges and opportunities, and it's, and I noticed that we're tightening up even with projects, because that project that the Parks Reg talked about, that event, I think in other times, that would have been just an automatic, I mean, funded. But I think that now it, we're moving into a situation where we need to be transparent with the community, that there's going to be some tightening up that, luckily, we have monies to kind of get us the next couple of years. American Rescue Money is a big part of it, but we're also doing some, our due diligence to tighten up. So I, I got to give credit to everybody on staff. We're, we're still the flagship city here in the southeast, so we have, you know, in terms of looking forward. So I'm, I'm real comfortable with, with, with the decisions we're going to be making tonight, moving forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In regards to Siaka, Chief, if we can inquire with them, how many service calls do they get from Southgate? And how many service calls are actually handled? Because I think that's going to be very telling, how quickly the response is if we indeed have one officer just for our city. And again, you know, Siaka does do a lot. And a couple of years ago, I did inquire to see what else we could do to try to get out of that contract. But obviously, because the CDC does require an animal control, the amounts that we were looking at were just too much for the city to be able to handle on its own. But I also wanted to inquire whether or not we can actually become part of the GPA, because once you're part of it, our fees will go down. I don't know if we can still look into that and see if that could be an option, so that Southgate is included within that GPA.
I've actually inquired in prior years on how Southgate can become a member agency, and it is a process. There needs to be a formal request from the mayor, and there's going to be discussions among the JPA. And it's not as easy as I think most would imagine. We were asked, this has been a longstanding JPA, but I can simply, you know, inquire again.
We can inquire and see whether or not that could be an option to kind of sort of lower down those fees, because I know that they are going up. So, and I would concur with you, Councilmember Rios, that our staff has been diligently working on their budgets in reducing and trimming. Again, we've had a lot of vacancies, and that has been a savings to the city as well. But our residents do need to understand that this council, as well as the department heads and the city manager, have been working diligently and asking a lot of questions in regards to certain areas to see if we can still cut back, or maybe alleviate a little bit of some of the positions, or change the positions so that one person could be given a little bit more responsibility, and it will be a cost savings for the city, not only in salary, as well as in pensions and in medical. So I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, and so I will make a motion to, for A, B, and C. And yeah, oh, and by the way, the next thing I was going to say before you say you had a question was, I wanted to say thank you to our city treasurer for the patience, and again, the apologies for the mishap and you not getting the report. But I need to make this comment about our city treasurer. Our city treasurer comes to every meeting. He's missed a few meetings because of some either job or family-related issues, but he has demonstrated his commitment, and he comes here to the 5:30 meetings, and he's here much earlier than that, reviewing documents, sitting, meeting with staff, and he stays till the conclusion of the meetings. And during some items that deal with financing, he chimes in. He's very active. And I was, again, taken aback when I heard comments being made that he doesn't care or he misses meetings. That's just outrageous, people. That's just outrageous. I don't know why the personal attacks are coming up, but he shouldn't have to deal with that. But again, I want to just personally thank him for what he does. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to apologize. I do have an email for this, this item.
Okay.
This email's from Ms. Angie Torres. She states that she is baffled by conflicting reports on the city's budget, while last night's meeting mentioned a 28, a 28 million dollar reserve. A Facebook page claims there's a potential deficit. On the same page, our city treasurer, Delipaz, is being criticized, which I find unjustful, especially since he was excused to attend for his child's graduation. I'd like to express appreciation for Mr. Delipaz's dedication to our city. He consistently attends meetings, stays till the end, and actively contributes recommendations. Interestingly, the Facebook page criticizing him never targeted the previous treasurer, was often late, rarely attended key meetings, and admitted to being merely a figurehead. Perhaps these criticisms are politically motivated as it's election time with council, with council members and the treasurer becoming targets. Thank you.
And you're not even up yet for reelection. Okay. Okay. All right. Well, I just wanted to, uh, start off by, you know, thanking the mayor for taking the time, you know, to, uh, meet with me and also, uh, review the budget together earlier today. I wanted to, uh, thank also, you know, the, uh, councilmember Barone for reaching out and also, um, uh, you know, addressing and discussing a few items that were top of mind. Um, and also, you know, thanks staff, uh, the city manager reached out and we had a good conversation, and of course, um, you know, whatever transpired, um, you know, how that's being addressed, you know, so look forward to working closely with him and with Director, Director O'Kelly, um, and she did spend a few minutes today as well, addressing a few items that I had. Um, so for today, I just have, you know, one, uh, comment and one question. Um, you know, the comment that I had for today is that, you know, the city, uh, financial budget policy pertaining to the general fund budget strives for a one percent to one and a half percent positive variance between the revenues and expenditures. Uh, the budget contingency is there, uh, to protect against the economic and, you know, performance fluctuations. The proposed, uh, budget is not within the policy recommendations. I do understand that the proposed budget is structurally balanced, but this is with one-time dollars to address the funding deficiencies. Addressing the issues, you know, as, uh, uh, councilwoman Avalos mentioned, um, it is complex, you know, and it is going to, uh, take time to address and is not going to be overnight. Uh, but if the budget is approved tonight, you know, I do recommend that over the next twelve months, you know, we close the gaps that are identified by staff, uh, further reducing our dependencies on one-time dollars and placing us on a positive, uh, one-point-five variance between revenues and expenditures. And I do understand that we have a twenty-eight million dollar, uh, and twenty-eight million dollars in reserves, which is fantastic news, and, uh, you know, but I, you know, would, um, you know, recommend that we, you know, focus over the next twelve months on eliminating that dependency on the one-time dollars. And that's, you know, my recommendations as it relates to the budget for the council. Uh, the question I had, and this is more for Director O'Kelly, and, uh, a propaganda video that, you know, was published on social media approximately two years ago, in the video, there was a mention of a looming nineteen million dollar deficit over the, uh, five years, and this would be roughly landing in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven budget. So, uh, Director O'Kelly, can you validate what the general fund estimates for the ending balance is for twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Thank you, Mr. Dela Paz. So, last night I did present a five-year forecast, and the year that you are questioning is twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven. The forecast amount that we're ending, the estimated ending fund balance will be eight-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars in the positive.
So, to be clear, not only did we reduce the projected looming nineteen million dollar deficit, we eliminated, is that correct?
That's a positive number, correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions. Thank you, council.
Thank you. And, and again, I, I think, uh, part of what we do is we review just about every line in this three-hundred-and-eighty, three-hundred-and-ninety, uh, page document, and some of the things that, uh, uh, caught my eye, uh, are some things that just have never happened before and we don't anticipate them happening again. We had a two-million-dollar increase in, uh, group insurance plan, that just doesn't happen, and I don't anticipate that happening next year. We had a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar, um, premium that increased. That usually goes up, but not that much. And again, I don't anticipate that happening again next year. And there's other things, we talked about the credit card, uh, uh, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, we're gonna be, we've already addressed the sewer fund. Uh, and again, there's a lot of little items like that, that we're gonna really focus on to address. Uh, I mentioned yesterday how if you go home and you look under the sink and there's a leak, yeah, you're gonna clean it, clean it up. If a couple of days later, you see the leak again, you might just clean it up again, but at some point, you're not gonna just be cleaning the leak anymore, you're gonna fix the problem. And that's what we're looking at, we got some issues there that we can address, and again, it'll, we are one of the lowest cities in taxing our residents, and we wanna keep it that way. And we wanna continue providing the services, and that's exactly what we got. And again, I understand the propaganda, uh, machines that are out there, I totally get it, but at the end of the day, you know, I don't pay attention to that stuff, I don't, I ignore it, I don't respond to it, and I encourage people, see what you see out there and question it, whether it's good or bad. You know, I tell people, don't believe everything you hear, not even if it's coming from me, just do your own homework. I think that's the best thing you can do. We try our best to be upfront, it's on record what we're saying here, uh, but presentation was made, it was very clear, we have twenty-eight million dollars in reserve, but yet it's being said that we have a nineteen million dollar deficit. It's just factually incorrect, it's just not true. So I encourage people, if you're on a, on a social media page that is putting that out, I'm wondering where they got the information from, maybe they know something the rest of us doesn't know, uh, maybe they can sit down with our finance director, because she's obviously missing something, cuz we're nineteen million in the hole, right? Uh, so it must be true. Huh? Very good. Okay, so I made a motion for A, B, and C, and again, oh, we have a second. I did, and a second.
Council Authority Agency Member Avalos.
Yes.
Council Authority Agency Member Barone.
Yes.
Council Authority Agency Member Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairperson Davila.
Yes.
Mayor, Chairperson Otavio.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, motion passed.
Congratulations, staff. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, and I apologize, but we've been at it for quite some time, we're gonna take five minutes, please, and then we'll come back.
Can we make a motion? I think we have to make a motion to adjourn first.
Oh, motion to adjourn, all those in favor, aye, okay, tonight. No, adjourning that meeting.
Now we're at a break.
Now you're taking five minutes. Please keep it at five. Yeah, we're gonna start a regular council meeting shortly.[1038.08]
We may have. Not, okay. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and get this next meeting going, even though the... Who needs an attorney, right? I don't know, not me. We'll get it started anyway. So at this time, I'm gonna call our regular meeting to order. And we're doing, let's see, the invocation will be Steve Costley and the Pledge of Allegiance. Who was that? Oh, Yodee, Yodee Glaze.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day and for all that you do provide for us, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for all the residents who are here or who are watching. And we ask, Lord, for the wisdom, for the City Council, and all the decisions being made tonight. We ask for your protection for everyone in the city, but especially for our police officers. We ask this all in your son's name, amen.
If I can have you join me in the pledge? Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Hurtado.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Barron.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer De La Paz.
Present.
City Manager Houston.
Present.
City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
A person to government code section 5495 2.3, disclosure of compensation for meeting attendance by City Council members is $790 monthly, regardless of the amount of meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We don't, we do not have a public hearing tonight, but Mr. City Manager, you wanted to do one slight change to what we have on here tonight?
If it pleases the Council, I was wondering, in the event that we had to cancel the presentation of the City Council's strategic goals at the last meeting due to the later hour and missing a member, with everybody here, I didn't know if it'd be possible to move that item from our report section to the beginning of the meeting, just to give it its, maybe its due priority of the importance of the work that was done?
Absolutely. Just because I did have some people in the audience that wanted to do a different item. I absolutely don't have a problem with it, but just so they know how much time we're gonna need here?
Uh, maybe four minutes, three minutes?
Oh, my Lord. Okay, I guess they're okay with that. Get the timer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Get the timer. Okay, who's up to bat?
Me.
Oh, my Lord. Set it at three, set it at three? Okay.
Yeah, we'll just have our city clerk pull up the first attachment, which is the City Council Goals. So back in March of this year, actually, one of the items that was discussed with me when they were first looking at hiring me back in November of last year was making sure that we have a current strategic planning process to make sure that the city is focused on specific goals that are important and that we have our actions lined up to those goals. And so part of that effort that I did coming on board was to arrange a consultant facilitator to walk our council through the process of developing goals. So before you see a presentation in the, in the agenda packet, but also up above here of this year's City Council Goals. So in discussion with the council and with the facilitator, the following group of goals were created. And if we could scroll down, here we have goals in a prioritized manner that the council highlighted both as an overall goal and then sub-points underneath each council. Public safety was seen as a high-level priority for the council. And specifically, when they focused on that, of course, overall safety is important, but something that really resonated with them was the fact that we have such a great positive connection with our police force in the community. Our police force has a great reputation of going the extra mile, being at special events, having special events, connecting with the community directly. Council really sees that as a strength of the city, and they want to see that continued as a key goal. The next one being fiscal sustainab... Whoa, we whipped along it. There we go, fiscal sustainability. We talked about that actually just before this conversation right here, making sure the budget is strong, that we're focused on creating strength, efficiency, and very much sustainability, as was mentioned by our City Treasurer, just the concept of looking forward and seeing maybe a threat and then working hard to make sure that we address that and get rid of a future problem so that we can sustain the city in years forward. What was presented last night was a five-year forecast, which is setting our focus on that sustainability so we take action, and that's a priority the council wants to make sure we're always doing. In addition, they know that we need funding for our normal city services and also the capital improvement projects that make our city better. With that, we have the next goal, which is infrastructure. So as I had mentioned earlier, there's a lot of great projects going on in the city, and so some are highlighted here to make sure... Yodee, could we go to the next? There we go. You can follow along, making sure that we're maintaining and modernizing our city roads, addressing our traffic challenges and signalized improvements, making sure we have projects that are finished up, like our Urban Orchard Park, that we're making sure also when we talk about infrastructure that we're accelerating and streamlining all the development processes where private companies and homeowners are trying to improve the city and the infrastructure, that we are supporting that and moving quickly through that, converting to new technologies where possible, making sure we're looking after public parking where possible, and then also making sure we're supporting both the building of our new East Los Angeles Community College, but also looking at surrounding development opportunities around our new college on Firestone. The next goal is community outreach and engagement. This, the council puts a high priority in making sure that our citizens are engaged, that they are provided new, updated information, current information, and there's a great connection. We've been putting a lot of extra effort in looking at our social media connection through Instagram, through our website, and through other means to make sure that you know what's going on. And so we're making sure we build on that as per council's direction. We're making sure we continue our engagement with local school districts, making sure children are being educated and partnering where we can with our schools, making sure that we're engaging both with our youth and our seniors, and continuing to look at engaging with our federal and state legislature partners to make sure that we are monitoring legislation that could hurt or harm us, and also looking for funding opportunities, and then also looking at opportunities to support the Futures Sela Cultural Arts Project. And then, let's see, where's my last one? The back, here we go. Goal five, two more goals. Goal five, community economic development and housing, so making sure that we are looking after the city and making sure it looks good, trying to make sure we're supporting any vacant land parcels that are in the community and trying to get development on them to help get rid of any eyesores, look for any way else that we can support business growth and our workforce, looking to improve, improvement, any policies we can do to help private owners improve their residential commercial properties, and also make sure we have increased availability of affordable housing for both students and seniors. And last and certainly not least, organizational excellence. When we're talking about getting all these goals done, we need the people in our organization, the city organization, to get them done. And it's a competitive marketplace to make sure that we can be competitive, be a place that has high-performing individuals that want to work here and want to stay here. We need to invest in our culture and our staff's professional development, make sure our recruitment and retention strategies are continually to, continually improving, make sure that we're implementing the vision and strategic plan goals that are listed here, streamlining collaboration and cooperation between our departments to make sure we're communicating well, and making sure that we're using technology where possible to be more efficient. So that's a high-level overview of the goals that council has set for this coming year that are important, that we as the city staff are gonna focus on. And if we could quickly have the last attachment, thank you, Yodee. With that, we paired with it specific tasks or projects that are coming out as... There we go, got a little beer font there. Thank you. These are goals in brainstorming with the department heads. We wanted to link specific tasks. Sometimes these vision statements or mission statements can sit in a wall, on a frame, or a binder, and then you wait a year and then you reopen it and go, what did we talk about? We wanted to connect that with actual tasks. So here you'll see specific goal types under each category, who's leading the team on that goal, what the specifics of that goal will be, and if there'll be, what will be the next action on them. So I won't go through every single one, but you'll see under public safety, for instance, our police chief will be leading just an effort to collect all the community efforts that do happen in the city, create a summary of those, highlight those, look if there's any opportunities to improve or adjust any of those goals, and then present them at a future council meeting. Pegged currently at September, but we have some flexibility. But we want to make sure that both the council and the community are aware of all the efforts the police department currently make to connect and meet the public safety goal. Under fiscal sustainability, we talked about a five-year forecast, so we have our finance, our administration services director that would lead, continuing to forecast, present, refine that tool, looking at ways to address the landscape lighting deficit that we talked about, where it's underfunding our needs by over a million and a half dollars each year. So we're gonna look at, how could we address that with the community to help fully fund that, that funding source? And then looking at other ways to do grants and get more funding for projects like enhancing our state street in town, looking at ways that we can get funding to do our next big street project. Under infrastructure, we're going to be doing Tweedy, as I mentioned, both the mile this year, looking at the second phase later. We need to finish Urban Orchard Park. We are going to focus in on our development review process, which involves our Public Works and Planning Department, including looking at getting new software to help that connection with people that are wanting development and our staff, and then also looking at our streetlights and seeing if we have opportunities to upgrade them using new technologies such as LED or solar. Under the community outreach engagement, I do realize I went over my time estimate, and I apologize. Maybe that'll be a goal for next year, get my timing better. But for this year, community outreach and engagement, we're making sure that we have a good calendar where we're organizing our communication schedule, that we're making sure we're highlighting both special events, internal items going on, new projects in the city, educating people on the budget, educating people on city laws. We're making sure we are very organized in how we send those out. We want to look at creating student government opportunities for high school students, and we're also gonna look at enhancing our public image and overall brand in the community. And then on our last item for organizational excellence, got a number of projects there. We really want to focus on creating a great place for our staff, and that is tied to our city's goals. So we actually got our first item completed, a meeting late, but it was to present this list to the council. And then we're looking at having quarterly updates of this list so we can update progress. We want to look at researching and developing retention strategies to keep our staff on board, and also look at expanding our ERC, which is a group that plans events for our staff. We want to see if we can expand events, and then also working at, looking for job training opportunities for folks working at the city. So with that, I apologize again for being a little over time, but that is a lot of work that went in by our council to help give us vision and direction for the coming year, and some specifics as department directors and myself, where we will support those efforts, both through these specific projects and how the budget was set up to reflect your goals.
Thank you. Let me open up to the audience. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, and even though we know who you are, state your name now, just for the record, please.
Yeah, Mario Dominguez Jr., 10607 Semigal Avenue. Okay, so I want three projects added to the strategic plan. One, the Southern Avenue Connector. Two, the Cellar Bridge Park. And three, the Splash Pad for Holliday Regional Park. Now with the Splash Pad, add it on to the list of capital improvement projects, put it on there, and then, like I said, use the ARPA funds, the CBDG funds, and the Measure A funds. And like I said, I only need a million from the ARPA, and so, because I'm waiting for that California State Parks grant to kick in. And so just have Mr. Costley bank that, and when that grant is available, we can go after that. For the Cellar Bridge Park and the Southern Avenue Connector, last Tuesday, I had a 47-minute phone meeting with a deputy of Janice Hons, he's her transportation deputy, the man's name is Luke Clip. So this guy, he really got what I was saying, and he stated something to me that no official has stated to me in the past two years I've been chasing after these two projects. What he said was, look, this is what I'm willing to commit to you. I'm gonna make inquiries, and I'm gonna call agencies and organizations pertaining to these two projects, and just get a feel of the temperature, and these are his words, to see who's interested in pursuing and developing these projects. Now, I can't make any promises to you, but I'm just gonna call and ask and see who's interested. So I sent him an email that has all the contact information of the folks that I've, that pertain to the development of these two projects, and this sort of Veta Flood Control District, Michael Cano and Robert Calix Metro through this Corridor Mobility Investment Plan, which would be, which would allow us to pursue these two projects and bypass the Cellar Cultural Arts Center and not take away a single dollar of funding towards that project with this Corridor Mobility Investment Plan. So, and he also has the city manager's contact information, there's a mayor's contact information. So you're gonna get a call from someone in LA County inquiring about these two projects. All you have to do is say yes. Say yes, you support the two projects, you endorse the two projects, and you're open to collaborating with LA County and Metro to help further develop these two projects. So again, add them on to the strategic plan, and think of, it's a declarative statement to LA County and to Metro saying, hey, folks, we're interested in these two projects and we're, to show you how interested we are, we're gonna commit and add them to our strategic plan. So yeah, if you could put them on the strategic plan along with the Splash Pad, I'd appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Seth Reese from Kaufman. I just wanted to comment about just the part about civic engagement, to really have a focus on bringing back more community folks into these meetings, to have a more accessible... I appreciate that they're being recorded and that the visuals are better on, on, on the camera, on the system, but I do still miss the ability to participate remotely. I think that that's really missing. I know that there are concerns about, you know, folks really not being productive, not being civil, through, you know, being, I guess what they call keyboard warriors, you know, people are, it's easier for people to be insulting when they're not in person. But I still think we do miss out on a lot of public input, so it's kind of weighing those two things. Personally, I think it would be more important to hear the other voices, you know, the people that do care about the city and do have an informed opinion on a lot of these matters and do have that. And it might have something, you know, that, that people here don't, don't know or oversaw. So I feel like it's, you know, we're, we're all missing out on that. The question I do have about this, these goals are, what are the metrics? And if possible, if maybe next year, if those could be put on, you know, what, when, and how are these going to be measured, whether or not they're gonna be successful or accomplished? Thanks.
Thank you, Liz. Next speaker.
Hello, this is pertaining a different subject matter. I don't know if it's...
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
It's okay. Now I gotta cross your name out of here, Jas, thanks a lot. Okay. All right. So I'm gonna close the audience portion. Any emails on this one?
I have none.
Okay, I'm gonna close the audience portion, bring it back. Questions, concerns? Okay, a real good presentation. It is a synopsis of what we discussed and well-presented. Thank you so much. So what we have here is the opportunity to receive and file.
Yep. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't know, Rob, if you'd like to just kind of elaborate that this is our metric for our goal setting, and that we actually have dates specific to that?
Yes. What he said. No, exactly. Appreciate that. That, that is the purpose of that project list. It is listed in the agenda packet, so you can see it. The plan is every quarter that we'll have another report on the update of how we're doing on those projects, whether they're successful or not, of course. With any list, there can be adjustments in time or scope, depending on if something new pops up, but we are using that project list, which is new for here, for that specific reason to be, have some evidence of if we're being successful and when we're being successful.
Yeah, and was that it? Because the last time you got mad, because I jumped in before you finished. Okay, okay. So look, I just want everybody to understand, so we come in and our job is to try to provide quality-of-life opportunities, and we also have to do it within certain dollar amount that we have available, and we do our very best on, on, on doing that. We also rely on input from the community, and we make every effort to try to facilitate that. And things have changed over the last, you know, you know, 10, 20 years. I mean, we didn't have the email opportunity, we didn't have the, you know, for a long time, I wanted a camera so people can watch this while it's happening, and I totally get that. So where we are today is far from where we were many, many years ago. And we also have a lot of things like Instagram and the, the app to report things. So, I mean, we have come a long way. Is it to everyone's liking? No, but it's still far from where we were before, and we're gonna continue to make improvements. Now also remember that there are things that we have to react to, and sometimes it's on the fly. So the state will come out with a new mandate, you have to do this, and we may say, wait a minute, where's the funding for it? And it's up to us to figure it out. So they're known as what unfunded mandates, and we come across those things a lot of times, and we have to make adjustments. Sometimes, you know, what's happened in a couple of local businesses, they abruptly shut down and they leave. And why, what's the reason? Well, the state now requires that the minimum wage goes up, and they lose employees because of that. And so somehow, we have to try to make adjustments so we can continue to generate revenue. And so the best that we can do is say, look, let's go ahead and sit down together as a group, sit down with city staff, and come up with a game plan on how to address a lot of things that we've been hearing from the community. And collectively, this is the, the thing we came up with. So I think, well, well done, Rob. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Jeez, got it in stereo. So I'll give it ladies first here. She made the motion, Vice Mayor did, and then Councilmember Rios seconded. I had to flip a coin in my head, and he got it. Rock, paper, scissors. No, I've seen them play that game, they always tie. They scare me, yeah. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Barron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila.
Yes.
Mayor Hurtado.
Yes. Okay, here we are. Now it's time for non-adjentized items.
Hello, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, well, my, I'm here to represent my mom as a landlord. She, name is Sandra Beltran. She lives in the city of Honeyland Park, but I live, I'm a resident of South Gate, 2718 Orchard Place. This is in regard of a problem we have in the apartment units, which is, you know, the property. There's a sewer line that's been broken, and that, it needs fixing, but we recently, we recently went to Public Works, the head of Public Works, to go and have an inspection of that sewer, of the sewer line, the pipe underneath the ground, and turns out that the sewer line is broken from the city side, and I'm not too sure what the next steps are for that. But also, because we got to, my mom, my mother got the report that it was from... But also, because we got to, my mom, my mother got the report that it was from the city and then I got the report that it wasn't from the city, it was from our private sewer line. So I'm not too sure about that. So that's, that's something that I need to figure out. But according to the Public Works, it was a sewer lateral, the one that is affected. So my mom's question is, what are the next steps that she needs to take? And if there's any kind of grants or funding that she could apply for so that she could replace her side if, and if need be, but also to get the story straight of which, which side it is, if it's her side or the city side. Oh, also, she said that because of the roots of the tree in the front yard, which we had countless times asked the city department to cut it down, but with no, because it's a historical tree supposedly, so we can't, they, they can't take it down. But that's the main problem causing the break in the sewer line. So I was wondering about that also, like, so we're going to have like backup all the time because that tree's there causing that problem is kind of like, it's, you know, it's crazy. Because my mom is paying every two weeks for it to be unclogged because of the roots coming into the, you know, sewage system and then causing the whole thing to, not just one unit, but all the units in the property. So we have residents that are complaining and complaining and, you know, it's not good when it comes to rent, you know? We, we can't use the bathroom, we don't want to pay the rent. So then we're stuck in the position that we don't have a way to fix things or pay the plumbing. So it's an ongoing problem that's been going on for a few months now and it's getting worse. The problem's getting worse, so we need to take action now, either if the city or, you know, the city help us if it's our, to help us fund the replacement. That's it. Thank you.
And Jazz?
Yes.
I won't tell them, it's our secret that you said I'm your favorite mayor of all time, okay?
Okay.
Next speaker, please.
I think her secret is out. Good evening, Council. I'm Amy Liu. I'm the Community Library Manager at Leland R. Weaver Library on Tweedy Boulevard. I'm here to represent both libraries and I just wanted to invite Council and the community to some special summertime events that we have coming up this, this next week. So Saturday, we have summer discovery celebration at, on Tweedy at the Leland Weaver Library. We've got a magic show, we've got prizes, we've got snacks, all sorts of things for the whole family, including, including art activities for adults. So we're not just thinking of the kids, we're thinking of the grownups too. So everyone is welcome. And for the Hollydale Library this coming Monday, the 17th at 2:00 PM, we have a party puppet show also celebrating the beginning of summer.
I'm sorry, Yody, can you pause her time? Excuse me. Can, can we take that conversation in the hall for me, please? Because I want to be able to give the speaker the, the respect to be able to present her, if you can have the conversation. Yeah, I couldn't hear half of your conversation.
Okay. Should, should I go back a few minutes? Just, so Weaver Library this Saturday beginning at 1:00, we've got a magic show, snacks, prizes, art activities for the whole family, all ages. And this coming Monday, the 17th at 2:00 PM, we have a puppet show at Hollydale Library that's also to kick off our summer discovery program. Those are all those reminders. Thank you, Council. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify some statements that were made. The contract for Siaka Carlos Amador, 9293 Park Avenue, the contract for Siaka states that there should be one officer dedicated to the City of Southgate for 40 hours, which is currently happening. And I verified this with a lot of Siaka officers, even the Mr. Lyons down there, is that they have one officer for five cities right now.
Okay.
So in essence, we're, we're paying for 20%. I mean, in terms of the question you guys should be asking them, it's not how many complaints they have, because every single time I call in for them to, you know, come pick up an animal, they say they never got a call. And then when I show them a text or, you know, the calls and then they stay quiet. And of course they give the runaround, then I have to get the chief involved and then it turns into a two-month matter. So you can't rely on what they're saying because they've been proven to show that they lied. So the question you guys should be asking them is, how fast do you guys respond? How many officers do you guys have assigned? And what are your procedures for picking up animals, giving citations? What are the fines? Things that a normal city would do. I've asked for that, they don't give me anything. The contract is very clear. The only amendments I see for the contract is Siaka asking for more money and the city giving it to them. So I would ask the council, look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Lisa Ruiz from Kaufman. I just wanted to give a quick update on one of the groups I'm involved with. That's part of the Air Quality Management District, the Community Steering Group for the AB 617. Some of the things that we've been working on is a community reduction, pollution reduction plan. And as part of that, we had approved for $2.5 million to be put into creating green spaces. And unfortunately, nobody actually applied. So they're going to be looking into how to distribute those funds for green spaces in the sellout region. And hopefully, I don't know, I, I asked if Southgate could reach out and, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money for nobody. And, and I also kind of wondered why nobody would apply. I know I spoke to, to Steve and, you know, and then this, this, the deadline was during a time when, when they were short-staffed. So hopefully they reach out to us and to the city and see if there's any way we can, if there's any, any project we're working on that some of those funds could be applied for, that would be great. Especially because we, a lot of, Jasmine's actually part of the, the group too. So there's definitely a lot of Southgate resident involvement in that group. So it would be really great to see some of those funds come back to our community. But one of the other things that we have accomplished is having more of a, more inspections for metal processing facilities. During my environmental consulting work, I did go to one such facility that actually bordered Southgate and physically saw a lot of the metal debris coming into the neighborhood. And so through my work with Communities for a Better Environment, canvassing the Florence Firestone area, we found that a lot of companies aren't properly permitted to even do a lot of the industrial operations they have. So we were able to get some of the AQMD staff to focus on doing and surveying and monitoring metal emissions from our area. And so they were able to really find out which companies are over polluting our area and, you know, they're reaching out to them, they're doing inspections. They created a new rule to really make sure that they clean up their operations and that, and they, they're starting community, they're starting workshops to really meet with these folks to let them know, you know, hey, this is how, what you're supposed to be doing and this is what you're doing wrong. So they're definitely starting with that approach first before issuing notices of violation. And so, yeah, that, that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz.
All right, I'm not happy. I'm not happy that I'm here tonight. I should be at home playing with my toys. But what? Again with that. All right, Mario Dominguez Jr., 10607, so I should be at home playing with my toys, but I'm here having to speak with you because we don't have a call-in feature. Now you folks have done a wonderful job of eliminating us from our proceedings. You know, you, you took away our beloved Zoom system and, and, and now I can't even, you know, all I can do is just watch from home. So I want to see a council member make a motion right here, right now to put an item on next council meeting's agenda for us to have a council meeting. And then I want someone here to second that motion and, because, you know, you know, I, I like, I like results, I, I like outcomes and I, I want to see that happen right here, right now. Let's stop fucking around here and, and make this happen here. The last, the other thing I want to hit on is there was a, I was talking to a resident and he was telling me about how the former city treasurer, and there was an email that was submitted pertaining to our current city treasurer and, but, but the resident I was talking to was, was telling about the former city treasurer Greg Martinez, how he supposedly, there was an image of him escorting vendors out of this year's Tweedy Mile Street Fair. And I don't know if there's any truth to that, but I was talking to Ms. Paulino on the Facebook group, on the message thing, and she's telling me, well, why do you even need that image? Just use last year's image of him doing it and say he did it this year. I said, no, no, Ms. Paulino, I can't do that. I said, that would be wrong. So I, but the, the thing is, you know, a, a resident told me the story about the, the former city treasurer, how he was like slapped in the face by, by another resident. I think, well, her name was like Sylvia Muschigay. And, you know, I, you know, Mary, you know, I don't know all the details. I was hoping you could, you know, enlighten me and, and tell me the story of how, you know, the former city treasurer got slapped in the face by one of the residents. I'm just curious, you know, what could he have said that would have enraged this grandmother to slap the hell out of him? I mean, I'm just curious, you know, you know, and then how did he retaliate? You know, you know, what, what, what did he do in response? I'm just curious, Mary, if you could just tell us, you know, the scumbaggery of the former city treasurer. And also, you know, the thing about the former city treasurer, he, he wasn't even present for the 5:30 meetings. You know, this guy right here, he, he's here for the 5:30 meetings. The last guy, no, he was a no-show. And so, so again, give us our, the call-in feature, you know, we deserve it. And if Metro can do it, why can't we? That's all we have.
Thank you, Mike. Adolfo, good to see you.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, my name's Adolfo Vargas. I live at 10313 Jackson Avenue in the beautiful city of Southgate. First off, I do want to thank you guys, you know, this month is more special to me and my friends and my close loved ones that it's Pride Month. And I watched the, the past council meeting and just remembering how hard I tried to get the council many years ago to see what the city can do to recognize June as Pride Month and some solidarity and support of my community that I'm so proud to be part of. And during the pandemic, we made something incredible. We did our first pride event here in this beautiful city of Southgate during the pandemic to show that there is a support system here in a Hispanic community that, let's be honest, is very conservative. We are accepted of who we are and, you know, from that event in Southgate flourished my annual Celebrate Pride Festival. Last year, we did it here in the beautiful city of Southgate and I'm excited to announce tonight that we do have an official date for this year's third Annual Celebrate Pride Festival. Will be taking place in the city of Carrejé on June 29th from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And as always, the County Boarder Supervisor for the 4th District, Janice Hahn, is our title and presenting sponsor. She has been a champion for our community and my community here. And I do want to thank you, Davila. You have been a pillar of support for the LGBTQ+ community because you're the mayor that presented that proclamation to making sure that there is a support system here in our community. And hopefully, I am requesting to have the support of the city of my, that I live here in, in Southgate. Kind of nervous here today, long day. So I do want to recognize the city of Southgate and propose recognizing you guys as an official Celebrate Pride Partner to support the solidarity of my community. We've already have Maywood, City of Bell, Bell Gardens, and since after our gala, now I can really focus on my baby. And so I really hope that you guys will come out and support and as well hopefully be one of our Celebrate Pride Partners. And thank you so much for everyone hearing me today. And I do want to thank you, Vice Mayor and the mayor and city treasurer for you guys taking the time to attend our 101st anniversary here in the city of Southgate. And thank you, Steve. Parks Rec stuff is very phenomenal. All the cities should be jealous of our Parks Recreation Department. They've been so supportive. So thank you so much and have a good meeting.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Adolfo, please don't leave. We have a proclamation for LGBTQ that I did not get an opportunity to present to you. I was hoping to attend the 101, but we had a death in our family, so I hope you can understand. I just sent our city attorney into my office so that we can give that proclamation to you. Because our mayor did do a proclamation and who else could we have given it to but to my former commissioner?
The one and only Adolfo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Okay, so I'm going to close the audience portion and I should have made this announcement. Normally when we have these non-agendized items, since there's not, they are not agendized, we don't take action, but there's an opportunity for us to address some of those. So again, we just went through a budget and I think a lot of us already made presentations on stuff. So I don't know if there's additional things we'll go through really quick. Let's start off with Meredith. And I'm not trying to give you any clues, but if there's nothing additional, I understand. Yes, Meredith?
Just one thing, I just wanted to let everyone know that we did close our, sign up for our waitlist. We did receive almost 5,500 applications. And now we're going to go through the lottery system where we're going to be picking 1,000 applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Costley?
I've got nothing to report.
I'm so disappointed. Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor. Public Works have nothing to report at this time.
I wish you would be here more often, let Art know that. Just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Thank you.
Wendy?
Good evening, nothing to report at this time.
Oh my Lord. John?
And I have nothing to report.
I am heartbroken.
I have something to report. I will be attending the graduation for Lieutenant Sergio Camacho, who we sent to the executive leadership at the Drucker Institute in Claremont. So I discussed yesterday about the importance of educating our, you know, our sworn, and that includes the executive level and the management levels, just because there's so many different changing things in this profession. So I'll be attending his graduation this Saturday. And then also, I just received confirmation that Dr. Gina Gallivan and I, who is our police psychologist, will be instructing again at the International Chiefs Conference in Boston. Originally, we're not planning to instruct, but on the international level, they called and asked that we present because it's such an important topic, police suicides, PTSD and wellness programs. So Dr. Gallivan and I have a, we're excited to be presenting on an international level to law enforcement leaders. So that's all I have.
Okay. City Manager?
I will take instruction and have nothing to report.
Excellent. Mrs. Salinas?
I will follow in line.
Awesome. Let's go to the treasurer first. I'll follow the chief's lead. So I do have one item. I just wanted, just to remind Council that, you know, we should revisit the Technology Master Plan. I know that in the budget, there was a upgrade to the ERP system, so that it was a significant investment. As part of that, let's, you know, potentially take a look at all the other pieces and start planning out for the future. You know, some of those items on the tech master plan might not be immediate, but I think we should revisit those, see if they're still applicable. Thank you. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
I have nothing to report for my department. However, I know that community development is.
Oh, that's cheating. That don't count. But okay, go.
They will be celebrating Ms. Dora Hernandez's 107th birthday. That'll take place on Thursday, June 13th from 12 to 1:30. You all are welcome to attend. It will be back there in the Community Development Department. It'll be my pleasure to attend. She is a sassy 107-year-old lady that I have had the, the, the honor to meet and I look forward to being there. Thank you.
Totally awesome. Yeah, what was the date again?
It's this Thursday at 12 noon. She's our oldest Section 8 tenant, so we would like to celebrate her birthday.
Awesome. Okay. Okay, Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the Department of Mental Health. Attended this weekend's Men's Mental Health. It was a really nice turnout and I would concur that, you know, we are mindful of our own mental health and that of those around us. Other than that, happy early Father's Day to all the gentlemen. Whether you are a father or not, the fact that you're a male and you are a role model to someone already entitles you to be a father. It's not those that, you know, donated the sperm, but those that raised our children.
Too much information there?
Just saying. I'm not a mother, but I definitely mother a lot of children. Thank you, that is all.
This is not a biology class, but I get the point. Councilmember Barron? He doesn't have anything to say.
I guess I succeeded. I have three daughters.
I have three daughters. So I'll, I'll gladly accept the, you know, Father's Day, uh, appreciation there. Um, I, uh, I would like to also echo what the, our city treasurer was saying. Uh, I'm not sure when's the last time that we looked into our, just our overall technology for our, you know, our workstations, uh, what we use for the day-to-day basis. If we can maybe start looking into revisiting that master plan, uh, I think it would be a good approach, uh, as part of our overall, uh, fiscal planning for the, you know, the future. Uh, I think it would be a great approach to do that. So if, if we can, uh, add that to a future agenda, I would appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Rios?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, uh, actually it was a few weeks ago that, uh, the tre- city treasurer asked for an update on what's happening at the college. And I got a little time, so I'll use five, 10 minutes to kind of talk about, uh, the update at, uh.
He's not joking.
It's a little small.
Go, go, go.
Uh, just to sort of communities aware, I don't know if you know, but we do have a, a campus here, East LA cause, it used to be called Southgate Educational Center. Now it's called, it's officially named the Southeast Campus. Uh, so, uh, but, um, yeah, so we, we have a, as you might have noticed on Firestone and, uh, Santa Fe, there's a building going up. That's going to be the new campus and it'll go up in, uh, the fall. Hopefully they've been, there's a lot of delays, but hopefully this is one of the last delays, uh, the fall of 2025. But in the interim, we're already out of our current site. So, uh, and that's going to become LA Promise, uh, Charter School. So, uh, they start the 15th of June, at least that's when they took over the building. So, uh, in the interim, we're going to be in, in, in a couple of other locations. And that's what I want to talk about. We're going to be at Odyssey High Continuation and at Southgate. And, uh, let's go with the first pre- uh, slide. And while it's just so small, I can barely see it. But anyways, that's what our new building is going to look like. So, and that's really exciting. I mean, uh, I don't, I, I'll obviously talk more about that, but, um, that's a hundred and, uh, 5,000 square foot building. It's a three-floor building. It's going to have, uh, like 44 classrooms, state-of-the-art equipment. This is going to be a game changer here in the southeast and in Southgate. So, uh, we're going to have it here and, uh, and I think a lot of people will be able to, uh, get careers and opportunities. Uh, and we've been, uh, basically serving, it's going to be full, uh, full campus with, uh, uh, state, no, all, no, all new technology. No, no things handed down, this is new. So we're excited about that. Let's go to the next slide. So, uh, like I mentioned, starting, uh, next week, uh, we're going to be housed at Odyssey. We're going to get, uh, so we'll use that during the summer to offer some classes. There's six classrooms there and, uh, we're going to be there. And, uh, and then on the 24th of June, we're going to be, have eight classrooms, uh, separated from the high school. So the college will, it'll be fenced off. So we'll be at both of those locations, starting the 17th at one o'clock, uh, this month and then the 24th. This is, we're going to have a shut, we, I don't know if you know this, but we have a shuttle going back and forth to the main campus, Monday to Thursday, beginning at seven till 10 o'clock. So we have nine daily trips going back and forth. Uh, so that'll continue, it's already started because our, our classes started June 10th at the main campus. So students can ride that, uh, for free to the main campus and back. We don't have a, a parking lot now, so we have, we, let's go to the next slide. Uh, this is, uh, well, this is the parking lot that we're going to use and we've been using. Actually, it's on Southern and Kelton. How many know where it's at? It's, so there, there's two parking lots and we just, uh, the lights are up again and, and we're going to draw some, because it hasn't been used that much because students were online. But anyways, we're, that's going to be our parking lot. Uh, the shuttle's currently stopping there and, and it's going to go around down southern to, uh, show in the next map. Let's go to the next one. Well, this is where we're going to have, uh, Firestone Plaza, you know where Bobos is at? Uh, we're going to have, uh, we're, we're leasing, uh, two, uh, two offices there and we're going to have student services right across the street from the current, where the campus is going to be built. So we're going to have, uh, counseling, uh, financial aid, we're going to have, uh, other admissions and records, all these services for students in person. So that'll be there. That'll open up, we, we should get approved by the city. We should get that going by, um, by, uh, late August. So we, we, and so we'll be there just, and that, not where students will just come in, seek services and leave. It's not about anything else, really just in-person services. So that'll start, and the shuttle will stop there too, once we, we have that going. Go on to the next slide. Uh, this is kind of at, at Southgate High. It tells you that we, we can use the, well, we have the, the campus, we, we, the college is paying 2.4 million for the two facilities for a year. So, um, we'll have the Southgate High School. The problem there is parking. That's why we have shuttle and that's why we have that other location, because it's all, if you're familiar with the high school, there's not a lot of parking. So a shuttle will be going around, uh, every, keep going to the next slide. Let's see, these, this is the high school. You see those mo- those are modules, those are bungalows, there's eight of them. We ha- we'll have those, we'll be using those, uh, and it'll be the entrance where citizens, well, that's where our entrance will be for the high school. So, uh, it, Dearborn is a narrow street, but that's where, uh, we're going to have, see the, on the other side, uh, faculty parking? After four o'clock, our students could park there and, but, uh, during the day when they have session, we won't be able to park there. That's why we have the shuttle going on and on. Okay, uh, go on to the next one. This is Odyssey. We have, I mentioned, six classrooms we'll have. Again, this is only, during the summer, we'll have it all to ourselves, but in the fall, we only could use it after four o'clock for evening classes. And there's six classrooms that we'll use. Okay, go on. Um, yeah, it's upstairs and downstairs. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. Go ahead, the next one. That's it? Okay, so, uh, I didn't show you the route, but there's two shuttles, one that goes to the main campus, nine daily trips, and the, a shuttle that's going to be going around, it could be every 15 and 20 minutes at the parking lot, at the high school, and then at where the, we're going to have students serve. So that's going to happen throughout, uh, the time we're there, uh, we're going to have that. And we'll have security at both locations so people could feel safe and all of that. So that's kind of a general, uh, plan, uh, giving, and, and we'll, we'll adjust as, as we implement this, this, it's not, I, I mean, we, it would have been good if we had better plans, but this is what we have, uh, at least for now. So I, I just thought I'd share that. Thank you for asking.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And, um, thank you for the presentation. It brings a lot of questions, actually, it, uh, cause, uh, and I, and I think that we need to have, uh, we need to have some sort of, uh, of a presentation from the district. And I know you work for, uh, for the LA, uh, for the district, for the college district. But it does bring a lo- a lot of, uh, concerns to me on parking. Cause, um, where are they going to park? I know that there is going to be a place of parking on Cauldron, but it's going to be very far from Cauldron to where they're going to be going to school, which is Odyssey and Southgate High School. So I doubt that a lot of the students are going to be parking all the way over there to come over here. So they cannot look for parking within the area of, um, so it's, it's concerning. It's concerning and I don't know if there's anything that we can do at this point, but, um, uh, I hope that the, uh, the residents in the surroundings are aware that the college, it's coming to their area and, uh, especially for parking. Great, I understand that the college needed a place to host, I mean, uh, college, uh, students, but at the same time, number one, uh, problem that we have in the city throughout the whole day is parking, especially in that area of Odyssey and Southgate High School. So, um, we need to look into, into that. We need to look into it. With that, um, I attended, uh, Career Day at Liberty Elementary School. I attended a couple of, uh, um, graduations, excuse me, can't talk behind this. A couple of graduations and, uh, I know tomorrow there is a Southgate High School graduation at nine in the morning. So, um, and congratulations, um, Mr. Treasurer on your son's graduation. Yeah, Thursday, not tomorrow? Oh, okay, Thursday. See, I'm already going. Nobody's going to be there.
Nothing wrong with getting there early.
That's fine, a day ahead. Congratulations on your son's, um, graduation. I know the accomplishments of our kids are immensely, so I wish him the best and I know he's going to go to Irvine, that's my understanding. And, um, again, you know, family always, always come first. So whether you're here or you're with your son, we are very understandable and believe me, if anybody else had a graduation that same day, we all have taken the day off. So congratulations on him, please congratulate yourself. So with that, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, yeah, the, we have culminations, we have graduations and sometimes they're all at the same time. And we try to go to as many of these, but sometimes we can't make it to all because we can't figure out how to divide ourselves into two or three people at once. Oh, is Adolfo left already?
No.
Is he here?
Come on up.
Oh, there he is. He's hiding back there. So let me go ahead and make sure that he gets this, Adolfo.
Come on up and get your proclamation for LGBTQ in June. Yes, let's go take a picture. Yeah, sure, let's do that. Come on, Rob, take a picture.
No, 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 I know the whole. Okay, so look, uh, so we attend as many of these things as we can. I just want to share this real quick with you. Uh, on Saturday, I did go to the Men's Health Event and they had a lot of really, really good, uh, information booths. But one really caught my eye because I'd never seen anything like this. And, uh, sadly, a lot of people were just avoiding it. And it was being avoided because the images that they were po- posting up, they, it had to do with children who had been, um, burned, first degree, second degree burns. And the images that you see there, uh, are not really appealing. And so as I was talking to the lady, she's, she was kind of sort of shocked as to, uh, why my interest in it? And the reason is, and I told her that I can relate, because when I was 10, I was involved in a car explosion and three of us were badly mangled. One girl died that day, my grandfather two weeks later. And, uh, I had a priest giving me the last rites for two solid weeks. I'm lucky I'm here. I was in the hospital for a month and, uh, I think only my wife can look at my legs and be okay with it. But a lot of times, I mean, I played basketball for Garfield High School and then I didn't want to go on the court anymore because everywhere I went was, ooh, look at the guy's legs, look at the guy's legs. And it hurts, you know? And so the little kids, the little children, uh, they want to invite me to go talk to them and hopefully say the right words so that they can know that we're just normal people. You know, so if I walk around in shorts one day and you see me, I'm just the same guy as you see here. And I think that's the message that she wants me to, uh, share with them. But with that, let's move on. Uh, we've got consent calendar.
Agenda items, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, uh, 10, 11, and 12 are consent calendar items.
Okay, anybody wants to wish on any of the, uh, speak on any of these items? Steve, step forward, state your name once again.
Is that really necessary?
Yes, it is.
I've done it twice already.
You, but see, the, the recording won't know you, so please.
So.
Time is running.
Doing the minutes, they're not going to be able, they're not going to be able to discern.
Time is running.
Who I am, all right. Mario Dominguez Jr., 107, 10607, semi-galvan. All right, so the tenure franchise agreement with Pacific Pipelines, so I'm going to ask the city to, uh, request Pacific Pipelines to, if they could donate funds for this splash pad that I want us to have at Hollidale Regional Park. And if you could put, uh, send, if the city could send a request to them, I'd appreciate that. And then, uh, that's item one, number three, uh, the parking restrictions. Uh, so I saw the map for this. I, I, I think the city is just being punitive here with the residents. I mean, you guys know it's a nightmare for us to park in our city and, uh, you should let the police department do their job. This is why we have them, let them patrol this, uh, these, uh, two roads, I think it is, these two stretches of roads in our city. And, but clear out the space that's adjoining the, uh, the fire station, because that's the, the, the main concern. So that should be addressed and, uh, that area should be, uh, restricted. But everything else, you know, you, you, give the residents a, a chance to park, you know, place to park, you know? They, they're competing for space amongst each other. So, uh, reconsider, uh, the, the restriction on that. And then, uh, hang on a second, which one is this? Four, is it? Yes, eight, completion of Firestone Boulevard. So, uh, I'm assuming this is Mr. Llorera. I've never met Mr. Llorera before. So the thing I want to say, Mr. Llorera, uh, tangentially related to this Firestone project, uh, since you are the project manager for Tweedy Mile, please be as ambitious and as hard as you can in pursuing this project. Uh, you, 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 you need to, uh, attack this and, and with a super aggressive, uh, approach, you know, hit it, hit it like a fucking hurricane. I mean, really just dig into this thing and, 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 you know, don't, don't dig around and drag this, uh, on forever. Don't belabor it. I mean, really, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity in which to address Tweedy Mile. Uh, i- it's shabby as hell. The businesses look sad as, as hell, they run down, worn out buildings. There's not much you can do with, with that regard, but in terms of beautifying and getting that street, uh, making it look like Firestone, uh, it really should be the gem of the city. So I encourage you to be super aggressive in your approach with this project. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next speaker?
I'm President of 2718 Orchard Place. Uh, this is in regard to, um, the school, um, uh, the elec that became, um, LA Promise. I have to say that my daughter will be attending the first open, the first year of, um, LA Promise. But my concern, my concern is, um, the public, the safety of the kids that are going to be attending, since that, um, corner is very, um, dangerous and also all the cars that go through there.
What agenda item are you speaking?
Well, I was just making a comment about, uh.
That's not, we're not there.
Well, okay, sorry. So just so that you know, okay.
All right, I think we got the gist of it, but I must.
I keep coming in a long time.
That's okay, Jazz.
But it's just, it's a concern.
I understand that, but I must abide by the law. Thank you. Next speaker. Come on back, Carlos. Even though you have a Dodger head on, that's all right, I'll.
Carlos, 1993 Park Avenue. Um, I'm here and I really want to make this clear. I'm here because of a problem that the city of Southgate created, um, right next to my house. Again, this is a problem that the city of Southgate created, my house. And this is regarding the, uh, on Southgate, I'm sorry, Southern Avenue. I lived there for 11 years, never had an issue. There's probably maybe one homeless person that was very respectful that would stay there. And for the most part, there's no one parking there and, and Southern Avenue for the longest time period, except for that one person and maybe someone that was trying to sell a car, because there is no residence besides me in that whole stretch. It's a city lot, my house, the fire department. And the last meeting, someone said that there was, one of the council people said that there was no residence. That's incorrect. I'm the resident there. What the city did was, a couple of years ago, is they started moving everybody out of the park and they literally told them to park across the street, right next to my house. And my concern was that it was going to turn into a homeless encampment and sure enough, it did. And when I hear stuff about people saying like, oh, there's not going to be parking, no one was parking there to begin with. There's no house besides my house. The next house is, um, Park and then Southern Place. And I have no problem with that Southern Place being open for all the rest of residents. If anything, I prefer them to be provincial parking, that way no one takes up the space for the actual residents that actually live there. In terms of apartments, once there's an apartment, they have a whole street and Benson to park, and they have a whole parking lot just for those apartments. So to say that there's not gonna be enough parking is ridiculous. And if, and if, if parking is such a concern, then let people park in the park. If you think that's a hazard, then why is that issue being sent to my area? Because I'm the one that has to deal with the smell, I'm the one that has to deal with the cleanup, and I'm the one that has to deal with my property values and considering that, you know, we're concerned with one-third of our, you know, of our revenue coming from property values, I would think that would be a concern. So this is an issue that the city caused. It was not something that couldn't be foreseen. ICE foresaw it, different people foresaw it. It's a really simple fix. Um, it's only a city lot, my house, and the fire department. The fire department's already stated, um, people trying to break in or breaking in. I had cameras everywhere, so I go out there and stop them for them and try to. I've had people try to open my door, people throw stuff over. Um, I, I shouldn't have to deal with that. And it's getting worse and again because the city made this issue. Um, so hoping for the, a quick resolution. Um, you know, I wish I could talk more. They allow Amazon lawyers to talk all they want and go back and forth, but for whatever reason, residents, we only have three minutes. Um, so hopefully this can be resolved. Thank you.
Okay, see, no one else. Step forward. I'm gonna close the audience portion. Do we have emails on this?
No, we don't, Mayor.
Okay, uh, let's bring it back. And if there's any comments that anybody wants to make on any of the.
I can, uh, speak to the item on overnight parking on Southern and Southern Place. Uh, this item was brought to the council, um, a couple meetings ago. I'm trying to remember now, but, um, out of concern over a number of items, issues in that area. Um, and parking is obviously a top priority for everyone. And we have to balance a lot of concerns in every neighborhood. And they balance between the immediate people that live there, people that, uh, might have, say, two cars for their household, people that might have 10 cars for their household, uh, people that are staying, live right there, people that aren't even from the neighborhood staying overnight, people that are behaving, people that are not behaving, people that are throwing trash out on the street, all these different things we're trying to balance. This neighborhood is similar to that. We've had issues with people staying for, uh, all overnight, maybe even multiple days. We don't have an ability just to have the police move someone who's parked at night. Uh, if, even if they're, you know, we can't necessarily catch them if they're dumping refuse or waste into the curbs, this is happening in this neighborhood. Um, or we have problems, then we've had repeated problems in the fire station with, uh, people that are parking there breaking in. The park has had issues along the, um, northern, uh, border with, uh, cars being parked there for long periods of time. Um, and then we have our city yard, which we're just concerned for safety. So the original parking proposal had, uh, no parking on the north side of Southern and Southern Place the entire length, as well as, uh, the far east part on the south side of Southern Place. On the latest map, you'll see that deleted, um, out of abundance of trying to minimize the impacts for people that might want to use those places based on council feedback, trying to balance those needs. Um, but if this was a neighborhood that had houses on both sides, um, they might do permit parking. We give that permission to reduce parking, and we have then people in that neighborhood that have four cars, they can only get two tickets. Um, what about them? So I think all the time in the parking where there's, it's a balance, it's not perfect. But in speaking with Steve Costley, who oversees our park, with our fire chief, who oversees the fire station, with neighbors that have had problems in the immediate area who back right onto this fire station area as well as our concern with, uh, safety in our yard, we believe this proposal will meet the balance. Uh, it's also been, um, we've done public noticing to the neighbors to let them know about this, to get their feedback. So we're looking for support to, uh, propose this plan. Again, parking during the day totally allowed. This would only be at night.
Yeah, and I did speak to Chief Espy. He was very concerned about the issues that are going on out there. You know, it's, it's sad that our, you know, brave, uh, firefighters are out there and then having their properties destroyed. And again, it makes it very difficult. And again, sometimes, uh, no one up here is gonna tell you that every policy decision that we make is perfect. Sometimes the impact, uh, to some is, is just not that good. And, uh, you know, we, we completely, totally get that. But in any case, okay, council colleagues.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve one, two, 12.
There's no nine, remember? We pulled item nine, yeah. So we have first and second. Right. We have a first and a second.
Real call. Councilmember Avalos.
Yes.
Councilmember Barron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rios. Vice Mayor Davila.
Yes.
Mayor Orstado.
Yes, except I will be recusing in item number two. It's dealing with the urban orchard, which is, uh, less than 500 feet from where I live.
Thank you.
Yes, rock on. Okay, uh, next item, please. Item 14. What's that? Did I miss something? Item 14.
Read it to the record.
Yes.
Yeah.
Following the conclusion of the report, the city council will consider A to receive and file.
Mr. City Manager, you wanna set the?
Set the stage?
Set the stage.
I can do that, certainly.
Key this up, please.
For the, uh, City of Southgate ADU presentation, um, that we have before us, we have our Community Development, uh, Director, who will present, uh, an update on the city's, uh, accessory dwelling unit, uh, support program and, uh, in assisting the, um, community's desire to, uh, build these. We have a bunch of assistants set up, and we also have a, a member of the staff here to, to present things.
Good evening all. My name is Sandra Varela, and I'm from Community Development. I'll be doing today's presentation.
Make sure you speak into the mic, please.
I'll be doing today's presentation for this EDU program. Thank you. Next slide. So good evening all. The Planning, Building, and Safety Divisions have been working with Consultants, Office of Office on this ADU program funded by a local early action planning grant. Our goal is to increase affordable housing in Southgate by cutting down on the time money, uh, Southgate homeowners spend to build additional housing on their lots. Next slide. ADU plan sets include one permit-ready ADU plan and three garage conversion standard plans. Uh, just note, uh, garage convergence, conversion, uh, standard plans are not quite permit-ready. Uh, and they are conversions of a one-car and two-car garages. Next slide. The ADU design, uh, process included an extensive analysis of Southgate regulatory conditions, physical site conditions, ADU permit trends, and architectural styles to identify the characteristics of the city's context. City staff work together with Consultants, Office of Office, to design ADU permit-ready and garage conversion standard plans to best be, uh, fit the needs of our residents. Next slide, please. So we're highlighting our permit-ready ADU plan set, and just note that it's brand-new construction and not a garage conversion set. Uh, the permit-ready ADU prototype developed for this program is a one-story, one-bed, one-bath at 49, 499 square, uh, feet, and this unit was designed to fit typical Southgate lot. Next slide. And this is showing our floor plan for the permit-ready, uh, ADU, brand-new construction. Next slide. Uh, our garage, uh, our garage conversion standard plans are pre-designed standard plans to streamline the design process for garage conversion ADUs, saving homeowners both the time and fees associated with the design process. The three garage, uh, conversion standard plans developed for this program represent the most common garage sizes and typologies found in Southgate. Next slide. Uh, garage conversion standard plans, uh, this is a, a floor plan for that. Um, the example for this is single-car garage with addition of 200 square feet, equalling a total of 408 square feet. Next example is a floor plan for a straight two-car garage conversion, equalling 438 square feet. Next example is a two-car garage with addition of 200 square feet, equalling 612 square feet. Next up is our engagement strategy, which will be in English and Spanish. We plan to inform residents about the program through community meetings, workshops, website publications, and social media posts. We will provide program materials such as step-by-step guides for residents to learn about the program. This is our engagement timeline. We are striving to complete this process by the end of July. And, uh, the next four slides are just, are example of our, uh, permit-ready engagement materials, which will be in English and Spanish, and they will include the next four slides. Uh, this is an example of our Earth Day Community Outreach, uh, Event. Uh, city and consultants attended Earth Day and Southgate Farmers Market to gather interest and feedback. And feedback included, uh, residents that are interested in building ADUs but wanted more one-on-one engagement, and also many concerns about cost, permits, fees, and parking.
Can you leave last slide up for a while? I'm teasing.
So our upcoming workshops, we had a workshop last June 5th, uh, we had good attendance, about 60 people. There's a lot of interest. Our next workshop is tomorrow. Um, we're sticking to our Spanish session 6:15 to 6:45, English session 6:45 to 7:15 at Southgate banquet room. Um, and then followed by our next, uh, Wednesday, June 26th workshop, same place, same time. And then there will be one, uh, more workshop to be decided. There will be a one-on-one plan support program, uh, for the garage conversion, uh, projects for about five homeowners. Homeowners will go through the planning process to pilot the standard plans and identify if there are any changes needed. And these are, uh, products that the, this ADU program will produce. Memos for the city on community engagement for best practices, a short ADU guide for residents, informational community engagement collateral on ADUs, uh, content for our Southgate websites, online web forms for intake, and content for social media. And that's it for the presentation.
So are there any at all restrictions? I mean, if somebody builds an ADU, uh, and I'll tell you, because my daughter rents one out in the city of Long Beach, and, uh, it's just her, right? But I would hate to see some abuse where somebody has a small little space and starts putting two and three families in there and creating more problems. Are there any restrictions whatsoever as to what they can and can't do?
I don't believe there are any, uh.
Oh, my God.
Restrictions on occupancy. Maybe Mayor can elaborate on that?
It would be difficult for us to police something like that, similar to any other rental units that we have. So in order for us to actually find out about those things, it's usually reported by neighbors and people seeing it.
But if they report it, are there restrictions?
Um, there is an occupancy, a maximum occupancy requirement typically.
So that, that was the answer I was looking for, if there is some restriction on occupancy and somebody exceeds that. I mean, there's gotta be some consequences. I mean, it's, it's pretty, uh, unhealthy. It's, I just find it abusive if somebody were to do something like that. So are there penalties?
Not at this point, no.
So it's, there's restrictions and there's no penalties. I think we gotta look into that a little bit more. Uh, I'm just concerned that there's a lot of people that are gonna be abusing this. The need for housing is huge. I'm not telling anybody anything that they haven't heard. But again, I'm just concerned about what could potentially happen, and I don't want to turn this into, you know, slum gate, you know?
This is one of the reasons why, um, next fiscal year, we are going to be proposing the Rental Inspection Program. We're going to be bringing that before you, hopefully, um, early next quarter.
And that program, will it require that some, because I can tell you years ago, and I, Maria was on the council during the time. But, uh, when these things were not allowed, Linwood was having inspectors go just randomly to check to see if people were living in garages. And what had prompted that was that there was a fire and people lost their lives because they were living in unhealthy, unsafe, unsanitary conditions. And so there's gotta be something that protects people from this kind of abusive thing. So again, I'm glad that there are restrictions, but if there's no penalties, there's no consequences, what's the point, right? So I hope we can come up with something. Okay, uh, um, let me, yeah, let me open it up to the audience. Is that okay? Yeah. Okay, yes. And, uh, we do need your name again.
Mario Dominguez Jr., 107, 6, 10607, Seminole Lab. I don't even know where the hell I live anymore.
Okay.
Uh, the one question I have is, are residents allowed to build rooms inside their garage? Can they have a room built inside their, their garage, sort of like, uh, I guess what you call a garage conversion? Can rooms be built? That's all I have.
Thank you. I'll close the audience portion, and, uh, any of my colleagues, and then once we ask all the questions, you can address them. None here? Yeah. Yes, councilmember Rios?
Uh, go ahead. Okay, uh, I, I'm sorry to get your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Sandra Varela.
Sandra, yeah, thank you. Uh, so very good. Uh, and just a couple of questions. Uh, so how many, are we averaging about 300 a year ADUs around there or a little bit more that are being built? Just to get an idea, uh, that's one question.
You don't have, I don't have the exact numbers, but I can get that number for you.
But that's what I heard before, so, okay. And then, um, is it mostly absentee owners that are, you know, I would like to know the race. I think the last time I heard that it was more people that are not living in the homes, but they're kinda, uh, you know, doing it. You, you, you know what I'm saying? These people that are not living in the community no more, but that are creating these, these rental homes i- i- in their homes to kinda maybe, you know.
Revenue.
Make, make money. Make money. I- i- is that the case? I'm just curious, you know?
I think, go ahead. So I believe there's more owner builder issued, uh, ADUs than, uh, than there's like contractor issued ADUs, but, uh, I don't think we keep track, right?
We don't keep track of who, um, who applies for the ADU units. However, if they do apply for a junior ADU, the state requires that it be owner occupied.
That they what? Owner occupied?
Owner occupied, if it's a junior ADU.
Okay. I appreciate the question. I think it's very important to know whether, you know, it's somebody who's living out in Vegas somewhere and they've got a house and they don't care. Three or four families live in the house and another two or three in the back, and it's just, it's just not good. Uh, so the, there was a question, right, as to the number? And is there like any, a rough number that you have at least? And the reason I ask this is, if you have a lot of ADUs being worked on right now, how will staff know whether that one that they just passed by has a permit to build?
We can verify permits by calling the Building and Safety Division and give us the address, and we can verify if there's a building permit issued to that address.
Because I got a feeling there's a lot of them that have been built without any permits, and I don't know how we'll ever catch that. Uh, any questions?
They're referred to code enforcement, so you can do a referral to code enforcement for unpermitted construction.
And just to, just real quickly, just to add to that, we're averaging about four to five applications ADU per week right now.
For a week?
We can get you the numbers to as ADUs permits issued finalized or, you know, projects that were stuck in plan check, so we can get you those numbers.
Okay.
Sandra, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I would also like those numbers because I think it's gonna be very telling, as well as if we can also, when we're gathering that data, indicate where in the city are the ADUs being built. Um, just so that it can give us a good bird's eye view of where it's gonna be more dense, just like we had some residents here a couple of weeks ago indicating that one person purchased several properties and has done the conversions. In regards to the two-car garage conversions, the two-car garage meaning, um, what if it's a four-car garage? Would they be able to build an ADU and instead of having it to be, uh, single?
Yeah, so if you wanted to convert a four-car garage, it wouldn't be part of this ADU program. So you would, uh, inquire with the Planning Division to see if that project, uh, was, if. So you would, uh, inquire with the planning division to see if that project, uh, was, if you could be able to convert your four-car garage into any kind of ADU.
Just because I was asked, it's like, well, what if you have, you know, a two-car garage and another two-car garage?
Yeah, they can reach out to the planning division.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quickly also, I just remembered, we do have the ADU numbers, JADU and ADU. So in twenty twenty-one, we issued two hundred forty-nine permits. In twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, two hundred and twenty, and then this fiscal year, two hundred and seventy.
So for about six, seven hundred more or less?
About seven thirty-one.
New housing units that have come on the market?
The past three years, yes.
In the past three years?
Wow.
Okay. Well, that's reflective, telling the state we're doing what we can with the crazy arena numbers that they gave Southgate in comparison to our neighboring cities. Thank you.
Just mayor?
Yes.
I, I would like to just maybe get confirmation if those, uh, I know the permits were issued, but were they, uh, was the, uh, occupancy, uh, certification given to those properties, uh, after, um, to those permits? That way we can actually get the, the true number of, um, ADUs that are actually, um, certified for occupancy, uh, would be great. Uh, and then I did get some calls from residents, uh, when they saw that this was on the agenda, uh, that they're, uh, they've heard that there is a requirement of, um, solar panel, uh, uh, being put onto ADUs. Can you elaborate on that, that, uh, for this, regarding the solar panels and ADUs?
Yes, so solar panels, panels will be required on the brand-new construction for the, for ninety-nine square foot ADU.
Right, and that's only for the brand-new, not the garage conversion?
Correct.
Okay. And now the garage conversion plans that we have, uh, the preset plans that will be, uh, generated, uh, are they taking, are all of them taking account that, uh, because the majority of our garages sit on the, uh, neighboring, uh, property line? Uh, so would the, would all of that, um, would all of those take that into consideration?
Absolutely, yeah. That has been taken into consideration, um, in the design review with building and safety inspectors and the official, yes.
So when we're adding the additional two hundred square feet on a lot of those additions, uh, the new additional square footage is, has a four-foot setback from the property line of their neighbor?
I believe there are four, four-foot setbacks.
Okay. And then, and just for clarification, uh, cause I think a lot of people have this question as well. The property has to be, or the ADU cannot be built within six feet of the, uh, existing property for a garage conversion?
Mayor of planning?
For existing garage conversion, you can actually, uh, use the existing footprint. We cannot require them to comply with today's code.
Okay. Well, there has to be a setback though, right, to the property line?
Not for a existing conversion.
But for the prop, even to the property line?
That, I know that the state requires a four-foot setback. Um, I've encountered this in other cities where they build on existing or convert existing structure. And let's say the existing structure is four thousand square feet. You're actually allowed to build an ADU that's a four thousand square foot ADU because it's a conversion on an existing lot, in an existing building, with existing setbacks.
And just to kinda sorta give you some feedback, there on Glenwood, there are actually garages that are on the property line, um, next to my mother's property.
Right.
And that's the neighboring. But again, we're talking about some homes that were built in the nineteen twenties, nineteen thirties, nineteen forties that were allowed to build on the property line.
Right.
So, you know, that four-foot distance doesn't apply. Cause their garage is like right there.
And that's why I wanted to clarify, cause in, uh, in the plans, you can't do anything to move the existing, uh, garage. But anything that's additional square footage, uh, I believe that we have the ability to require that additional square footage to have the four-foot setback.
Yes, on additions.
On additions, yes.
And let's say it's, um, property line to property line or property line next to another garage that has it on the property line. Uh, what I believe they'll have to do is to make it a firewall-rated wall in between those two properties.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I think it's a great opportunity for residents to be able to see a preset, uh, design of plans. Uh, I know for my plans, uh, for my ADU, uh, cost me close to about five thousand dollars to get that completed. Uh, this is a great savings for, uh, a resident who's looking into doing this. Um, and I think it's a great opportunity for a lot of these parents like myself who have, uh, children that are getting ready to go into college. They're, they're gonna become young adults and we're trying to navigate the very difficult time that they're gonna be having as, uh, the new generation of homeowners in our community where they may not be able to afford, uh, you know, being able to purchase their first home, uh, as quickly as we have, uh, growing up. So I think it's a, it's a great way to be able to, to offer an additional space or additional square footage for a resident to be able to build out, uh, and be able to do that. Um, so it's a great opportunity. But thank you for your presentation, Sandra.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and again, uh, this is something that's out of our hands. Uh, you know, as, as, uh, Councilmember Barron said, it isn't a, an opportunity, but it does impact our current residents. A lot of people that I know are objecting to this. They would like for us to vote against this, but we really can't. This is something that is, uh, you know, was required by the state to allow these opportunities. And, uh, you know, I wish we could say no to them, but we, we can't. Okay, I entertain a motion to.
Make a motion.
Motion to receive and file. I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Orstado?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, take it away, uh, Councilmember Barron after it's read in.
The city council will consider approving the warrant register for June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The grand total is one million, two hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine, I'm sorry, sixty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. My eyes are crossing.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and open it up to any member here in the audience who'd like to, uh, ask regarding the warrant registry for today. Seeing done, I'll go ahead and bring it back to council. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
Uh, Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios? Vice Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Mayor Orstado?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Good night, everyone. We don't need a roll call for that one.